All right, the computer says four thirty. Let's call us meeting the order. Angie, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Bailey.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bunty.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here. God, could you lead us in prayer?
Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless us with wisdom and guidance as we consider these matters before us tonight. In Christ's name, amen.
And for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which is theirs.
One nation, under God, in the full of liberty and justice for all.
Born and unborn in Michigan. All right. Believe we have some few changes to the agenda. Under, okay, L, the administrators report. Tracy isn't gonna give us one tonight. And the monthly reports, I believe, are in the packet, so if we could scratch L. And then, under new business. Item four, we're gonna split into an A and a B. A will be that the villages, Ashley and Perrington, and we're adding a B, which is gonna be Wheeler Township. And we're also adding a fifth item, spicers on the AC unit here. And anyone have anything else?
What was the agenda?
Motion by Commissioner Bailey, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lumberman, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion, we have an agenda. Brief public comment, any members of the public wish to address the commission? Step forward to the podium. Anyone online, please unmute yourself and address the commission. Matt, you see anybody?
I'm not seeing anybody online right now.
Okay, very good. We'll move on. We have, we're gonna move into a public hearing regarding the adoption of the budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. We need a motion to do that, I believe.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bailey, we have a second.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Smith, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion passed, so we're into the public hearing. And Chris, are you gonna handle this, I believe?
Yep. You can set up real quick, we're gonna still ahead and share our budget document for our video recording. What we're gonna go over tonight is the second draft of the twenty-two, twenty-three Gratchit County budget for next year, which will commence on October first. Two weeks ago, we went over draft one. There were many notable changes that I will get into when I compare the two for you. But one item that we need to address before we get into the details of next year's budget is we need to approve the millage rates for the five voted villages, which includes COA, a sheriff's village, libraries, parks, Greater Gratchit and MSU. I've held individual conversations with the majority of the trying to get zoom out of my way here, there we go. The majority of the commissioners over the past week and a half to see what type of information that you would like provided in order to determine whether or not millage rate should be reduced for the next fiscal year, or whether they should remain the same. One of the suggestions that gained traction in conversations with nearly all of you was that there was some interest in possibly capping the amount of money that was brought in. And by that, I mean, looking at how much each millage brought in in twenty-twenty-two. For example, here, we're looking at this Parks Village. And if you look in the orange highlighted section in the middle, there's several different options there. And something that was added to what I am sharing on the screen that was not placed into the board packet is the very last option, and that is keep it the same as twenty-twenty-two. You see in twenty-twenty-two for this particular village, the estimated collections was five hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. The current millage rate for Parks is approved at point three, four, nine, three. If we were to apply a millage rate to bring in the same five hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars for Parks for the next fiscal year, under that keep the same column, the millage rate would be adjusted to point three, four, five, six. That's a small reduction from point three, four, nine, three. The savings to the community and the businesses is minimal, but it is a decision that would be up to the I would like to turn this conversation over to the board to see how the board feels about looking at these different options. Chairman Murphy, I'm happy to take any questions to go through any of the information that I have. This is something that I've been bringing to the board for approximately ten months now. So, and at this point, before we can approve a budget, we need to approve some of the millage rates. And we won't do it in this public hearing, but the understanding of what you would like to do with those millage rates, we will take out of this hearing and we will vote for that.
Oh, I think you wanted to bring this up.
Well, I've been talking with you on bringing it up. This is something Chris and I have been talking about throughout the year, and one of the things that we both noticed is the city of Elma, if you ever participate in their meetings or watch their Zooms, their YouTube's, they monitor each village department or everybody who's getting a village, and they make slight adjustments to it every year. And I think Chris and I were talking one day and I think he said, did you see that? And I said, yeah, I saw that. And he said, we could do the same thing here. And even if it is a token amount, I would like to see us do something here. It's something that I believe the Board of Commissioners has never done here. And I think going forward into the future, finances are going to be very uneven and changing a lot. And it's just, I think, a practice that I'd like to see the board get used to. And I guess what I would like to see, Chris, is like, if you would go through department by department and show just to keep the net dollars the same as last year, and I think last year was the best net dollars that any village recipient ever got. If we just keep the dollars the same, could you show us, and I think you got the numbers there, what we would be talking about?
Yes. So, the very first one in the presentation is COA. So, when we look at the peach red shading, there's historic millage collections from going back to two thousand nineteen. Twenty, twenty-twenty was seven hundred and ninety-four thousand that was collected. This past year, there was projected to be one million eighty thousand. Actual collections came in just a sliver under that because of Board of Reviews, but that was the target for this past fiscal year. So, next year, we're projected to bring in one, one million ninety-one thousand for COA. If we were to cap it at what was brought in in the previous year, we look down again into the suggested millage rates. The suggested millage rate to get it back at one million eighty thousand dollars would be point six, four, two, two. So, that's just a slight savings, like I said, for the residents and for the businesses. Now, if, in the future years, if you would use the same methodology, the savings could be larger if our tax base goes up significantly. When we look at the Parks Village, twenty-twenty-two projected was five hundred and eighty-one thousand, spring and five hundred and eighty-one thousand. Our millage rate would go down from point three, four, nine, three to point three, four, five, six. And that would, again, would bring in the same amount of money that was brought in this year, which was a champion year for taxable value in our county. MSU Economic Development, which is Greater Gratchit, estimated seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars this fiscal year at point four, five. If we were to raise the same amount of money for them in the upcoming fiscal year, it would lower it to point four, four, five, two. Looking at the library village, the projected for the current fiscal year was eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. To bring in the same amount, we would lower the millage from point four, nine, nine, four to point four, nine, four, zero. The last one that I have here is the Sheriff's Village. Estimated incoming millage money for the current fiscal year, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars at point four, four, nine, four. Bring that same amount in, it would be lower to point four, 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 six.
That's road patrol.
That is, yes.
Yeah. Road patrol. It says Sheriff's Millage.
Yep.
I just wanna make sure everybody, it's road patrol.
Sheriff does. Look at the jail also.
Yeah.
Hold jail in this road patrol. Thank you.
Chris, my feeling on this, you know, if we're gonna go forward and do this, I think we should be making the same adjustment to our general fund village. Now, we already had to set it in July. So, I would hope, and I'm not gonna be here, but I would hope the next board would continue this policy and look at cutting our own village, because I can't see having us cutting the general cutting all these other villages and not cutting our own general fund village.
I agree with that, too. After all, we have money from the wind turbines to the county. So, we've not put any of that money back out into the community. Said we're doing villages to bring in more money from our taxpayers. Now, we wanna cut the villages. And then, they get a little bit of this money from the wind turbines, but I also think, too, that all of the villages really watch their money. They do put money away for the rainy day, for unexpected you know, things that are happening. They say the library, maybe they have some plumbing problems, so they've got something to fall back on. But then, when I look at our sheets, where we're spending money to paint a room or put new carpet down and and buy new vehicles continuously, especially at times where things are a little bit harder, I'm real concerned about the general fund village. And also, I pulled up one of the old books, two thousand fifteen. In two thousand fifteen, I'm looking here. It'll say senior village. Senior village in two thousand fifteen was point six, five, zero, zero. Now, it's six, point six, four, nine, two. So, it's actually less money than it was in two thousand fifteen.
But if you'll recall, Keegan has gone over what the headly rollbacks are and how they affect each village. He just did that probably about a month ago, so that would explain why you see these villages rolled back a little bit.
So, they've already been, so they've already been rolled back?
As by the state law, that would
So, they're actually getting less now than what they were in two thousand fifteen.
The villages are less, but they are getting more tax funds. Because the taxable value of Gratchit County has grown.
And probably the coming year and years, we've seen home values rise, so probably the property tax that is, I mean, money is gonna rise also. I wouldn't, I would think. And people are hurting out there, so if we can save them a little money, I'd be in favor. But once again, I think we have to look at our own village.
I do, too.
Apply this toward these voted villages. We should also be cutting our own operating village for the general fund.
I believe this process is setting that exact precedent.
And that would come up in the spring, and there already was a slight cut due to the headly cuts. In total, Chris, it looked to me like the total amount that we would be talking about here is less than forty thousand dollars.
I would say yes, I'd say just a hair under forty thousand dollars.
So, I'll make a motion that we adopt these slight cuts. I can't do that yet, can I?
No, this, but
Right on.
Right.
We should, but we need to agree in principle before we move on, because of this is, this affects the budget.
Right.
So, I would you know, ask that you would say, can we vote in principle? All right, you know what I'm saying? So, that we're not, we're not covered, we're covered so we can continue with the budget because we need to know, to talk to the folks, to set a budget hearing, so we know when we get there, what that budget was gonna look like. But we'll have to vote after, we can't vote per se. This, it's a little tricky. Hey, well, you know, folks, you agree in principle? And you're looking at me like?
Well, I don't agree. I'm sorry about that, but we just went through painstaking things with giving people raises. The times are tough, I think, you know, based on the economy and things like that. Still, to say to the sheriff's department and the road patrol, you're gonna get the same money as you got last year to run those cars on the road at night. I know that's the principle of the thing, it's a minute bit of money. Let's say the library, you can't put any more money away if your roof falls in or whatever. I think everything's going up, and I just think we ought to leave them alone. You know, I just, I believe in December twenty-three, it'll probably be the highest values this county will ever see when we put these other seventy-two, seventy-four windmills in production, and they'll be appraised, they'll be all up and running by next time we do assessments. So, that'll be our highest value of dollars in this county that we'll ever have unless something crazy comes. And then, it's gonna start down. In the next fifteen years, it's gonna start working its way down when they depreciate, and they're gonna come down to what is a thirty percent, sixty percent, or something like that over fifteen years. We only have an agreement with one company, we don't have it with both companies, or all three companies. So, I think today, while it's a small amount of money, I just think to say to these folks, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna cap you at the same as it was last year. I don't think that's doing them justice, and I don't think that's the spirit of people voting these taxes in, you know? I would hope that because SCVs went up, we could put an extra five hours and a night in a car in a police department, or, you know, and I think when you look at businesses, I'm gonna be honest, I don't pay no personal property taxes because we're under the eighty-eight thousand, or whatever that number is, cap. And all these small businesses in the community, they don't pay that because they're under the cap, and whatever that was, eighty, eighty-five thousand, something like that. Personal property, Keegan, is that, is it? Yeah, but I'm just, it's gotta be at least eighty, eighty-five thousand dollars. So, most businesses don't pay personal property taxes. Walmart pays personal property taxes, and they don't live here, you know? Big places pay that. And so, I just think that reduce these now is, it's not probably in the spirit where people voted this stuff in. And so, that's just my thought.
Well, I can't vote.
So, have we had enough of the discussion? We can't vote at this time on it, correct?
Do we have, I see that we have someone from the library here, Jessica, or Jessie. Is there anything you would like to say about it?
Please come over to the mics up here. Thank you.
I'm Lori Taylor, the Director at Elma Public Library. I don't have anything prepared or anything, but I just wanted to say that I know that all of the libraries in Gratchit County really depend on this village. Just in reference to Elma Library, we are so grateful for it, we use every dollar. We've had some substantial cuts in our budget recently, penal fights have dropped. We've already had to cut our operating expenses in many cases by fifty percent in certain places. And so, we definitely depend on, you know, every dollar that we get, and hopefully even whatever extra comes in, even if it is just a small amount. It could be the difference for us in having to cut different services that we now have that the community just really relies on. So, I just wanted to say that every dollar is important to the Elma Library, and I'm sure the other libraries, too. So, that's about all I wanted to say.
Can I ask how many people are here from the library tonight? Would you raise your hand? That's how important it is. Is anybody else here from the Sheriff's Village? Yep, and then how about the Parks, or, go ahead.
The thing I got to say, and I'll come to the stand, is this village will go back for the voters in twenty-twenty-four. And the money used for the village collection is put to good use. This year, my cars, car maintenance, gas, labor costs to have cars repaired, they're on the road a lot, has almost doubled. And by reducing this, even though it would be very small, or not letting it go to where it would be, wouldn't be good. I heard forty thousand dollars, and I'm just gonna throw this out there, there's forty-three thousand people in this county, some are kids or whatever. That's less than a dollar a person you're gonna cut. But it could make a difference.
Sheriff, would you also, since we have so many here this evening, just give us a little idea of what's going on in our county that shows that some of the reasons why
We're in a public hearing right now, Jean.
About this here.
Okay, sorry.
That's my perspective.
Is there anybody else here from any of the other villages that I see it would be Parks? Senior citizens?
Hi, I'm Jen from the Commission on Aging, and I would just like to say the exact same thing that I said in February. Food costs, gas prices. We're still trying to get our bearings from going through the pandemic and not being able to fill positions. That's what I had to say. Nothing's changed for us since February. Any questions?
No, I agree with you. I mean, when you look at your operation, I gotta believe, staff are going up and go to a restaurant and what a burger costs you today and things like that. I mean, if you're preparing a lot of food, it's gotta go up and take money away. I just, I don't think now's the time. And when you look at housing, let's say you think that properties are gonna go up, if we were all guessers, it'd be good, but I guess that interest rates are gonna go up tomorrow by probably three quarters or a point, the housing market's gonna stick down, buying. I just think values are gonna start coming down, and our big value is gonna come down in December or January, the next trip starting, a year from now. So, that's why I'm really not for cutting it.
I would just say, though, if I sit here and I look at the cash balance there for Commission on Aging, and there was a half a million in cash in twenty-nineteen, growing to six fifteen in twenty-twenty, growing to eight fifty-five in twenty-twenty-one, and projected at a million fourteen thousand in twenty-twenty-two. Do you, do you really need to keep building that cash balance?
Well, I can answer that by saying in twenty-nineteen, we had big plans and big ideas. George can attest to this. Lots of plans for bringing different services to clients, and then pandemic happened. Tied our hands, couldn't do anything, trying to not do anything to your senior citizens who are the most vulnerable population. So, we couldn't do anything. So, twenty-twenty, it grows, twenty-twenty-one, it grows because we weren't able to provide those services or hire people, still having trouble hiring people. So, yes, it has grown, and I'm, I'm a taxpaying citizen. I agree with what you're attempting to do, but I don't know that now is the time, just based on it's not a level playing field. We're, we've been up against a wall for quite some time, and we are super excited about what we're about to do. That's what I can say. We, we've been challenged to the brink. And we're just ready to move forward and utilize some of these funds to provide services and activities for senior citizens in this county.
I can, I can
John, I'm looking at the same numbers, and I agree with you, they are, all of these villages are building cash balances. It's pretty steady. And you had something to say?
I just wanna say that I can't begin to tell everybody how important it is, you have Commission on Aging. We have two people in the building I live in that rely on elves, about them. One lady can't even get out, she's all bound now. And it depends upon your services. And they come in and they also help her with a few things she has to have done, and it's very important.
Thank you for saying that, Jen.
And also, the taxes, these people pay taxes all their life, all their life to have Commission on Aging. And so, and other, and you do different. I know you were gonna get involved a few years ago about adding more services and stuff like that. And I'm sorry that that didn't happen, because with the pandemic, that when that hit, put a lot of people in their homes by themselves, nothing to do, a little TV set, and they become very lonely. And if it wasn't for some of the people that you have out there, I'm sure that some of these people would not have made it.
Thank you, Jen. Does anyone else have any questions for? Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the village here? Let me think.
I think he's covered everybody.
I think we have, oh, MSU Extension. Or, how about you?
Yeah, I don't think there's any question that we all value every one of these programs. I think every one of us do, this is just an exercise to make sure that we, as Gratchit County, are taking the proper amount of money from our community and giving it to these programs so that they're funded at the proper levels. Also, we do not have to come to a consensus right now, we can go over the budget. Just long when we exit the public hearing, we make sure that we approve the millage rates first before we approve the budget. Because if something does change, right now, the budget is currently loaded with the villages at the maximum rates. Because if something does change, right now, the budget is currently loaded with the villages at the maximum rates. So you would be able to exit out of here, pass it without making any changes. If you were to change the military rates, you would need to then say, we would like to pass this proposed budget with amendments to the military rates as previously proved in prior. So if you would like to continue discussing military rates, we may, if you would like to move into uh, going over draft two of the budget, we can also do that.
I think we should continue on with the budget. When we're done, we're done and we can go out of the. That's my opinion.
Go ahead.
With the budget, yep. Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and start here on page two, or I'm sorry, page one, which is the budget transmetal message. This is the first thing I started with when we went over this a couple of weeks ago. Some of the changes that you're gonna see in the second draft includes uh, wages that were approved, elected officials, order of commissioners. Two unions had raises that were ratified that were now built into this. Our general fund expenses uh, under the budget in brief there since then have actually dropped from fourteen point seven million, fourteen point five million. Uh, there were three underlying uh, large changes that caused that drop. The uh, very first one was um, I found an error in how I was funding the friend of the court. So that dropped general fund transfer from general fund to the friend of the court by seven thousand dollars. Our capital projects transferred from the general fund dropped four hundred thousand dollars. That is because the, it was uh, passed in the previous meeting that we would use the remaining five hundred and seventy three thousand dollars in ARP funds to help fund our capital projects. So that lowered our transfer from the general fund to the capital projects fund. Now there's a discrepancy there. You approved five hundred and seventy three thousand and I said that it went down by four hundred thousand. The difference there, the hundred and seventy three thousand is a portion of the audio and video for the courtrooms. We placed the audio and video project on the capital projects list. Last meeting, that increased the expenditures. And after that, we approved the ARP funds to pay for capital projects. So that's why we only have a net four hundred thousand dollar savings because we also increased our capital uh, projects by a hundred and seventy three for that particular um, project.
Just real quick, that was all our money too. There was nothing funded from the government for that from the courts.
There were, there are two other funding sources that are going to help pay for that. If I remember correctly, the total project was somewhere around two hundred and forty. So yes, there is some um, law library funds. There's a, there's a, there's a fee that's collected by one of the courts that funds the law library because the law library is used with this audio video. And they are going to pay, they are gonna pay for that.
That library money doesn't come.
It does. We have a law library fund that we store special revenue. Yep. And then um, another larger portion of it is gonna run through the friend of the court federal funding. Which then the federal funds will cover two thirds of the audio and video project that is going to be installed in the friend of the court. So yeah, Jennifer did a really good job breaking all that down and and hunting down as many funds from other sources as possible. So after we decreased our construction or our um, capital projects, our salary increased from what was approved in the, in the prior meeting has an overall increase of a hundred and forty one thousand dollars. So that's from the two union ratifications and and the other um, salaries that were approved. When we, we started with a forty two thousand dollar surplus when we net those three big projects, we end up with a three hundred and eight thousand dollar surplus in this current budget draft two. The second difference that we're gonna see in this budget in brief is our overall county budget dropped from sixty six point seven million dollars down to fifty eight point five million dollars. The reason being for that drop is because next year, I I believe that that this is actually just started right now, but uh, the county will not be the custodial for the R E S D taxes that are collected at the local level. So the uh, local municipalities, when they collect their taxes, the taxes for the R S D will go directly to the R S D and not through the county treasurer. So that's gonna drop our expenditures down because when we send it to them, it has to be counted as an expenditure.
Chris, what's the legal uh, situation on that? I thought all taxes have to come to the county.
I would have to ask our treasurer what that um, position would be. Is that something that you are able to?
The R A S T passed a resolution for the local units to uh, send the money directly to.
How do they know how much?
They have that authority. Okay.
How would they know how much money they're supposed to get until all the money comes in, especially from the wind turbines?
Well, it's the same way that we calculate uh, the money that we're gonna get. There's a mileage rate that they charge uh, against the taxable value of the county. So it is, take the taxable value, divide it by a thousand and then multiply it by the military. That's what they should be expected to collect. And each local municipality sends a report that says this is what, how much we collected for you so that.
There's our state upside that they depend on. What happens goes in and puts in the values and then they depend on that for the budget.
So the challenges with this budget, number one being healthcare costs. We, we've had some issues with our healthcare costs going up and some potential uh, large costs for uh, current coverage that we have for this fiscal year. Retirement expenses continue to to climb. Uh, as we have more people that are retiring, that have pensions, we still have those legacy costs. And then on top of those legacy costs, we are adding new employees that we have four O one Ks for. So our, our retirement legacy costs are are not dropping quicker than four O one K costs are rising. So we just keep compounding our retirement costs until we reach a peak. And what will really give us relief is when our pension bond fund is paid up in twenty twenty six. So that, that peak is not that far away.
Should we have a projection when that peak might be?
I don't see our retirement costs going down until twenty twenty six.
For several years ago, we took out a bond for six point seven million dollars when it emerged. And also when the first money came in from the wind turbines, that was another five point five million dollars. Um, that, that was supposed to have really made a big difference. And I would think that also we had several years there, the stock market was pretty good. Is there some reason why we're still paying or that we owe so much?
Well, one of the, the, it's because we're paying the bond payments for that bond that you were talking about. Now, I do believe that the county has seen a great benefit by taking that bond now. If we didn't, had not done that, uh, our annual pension cost would probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of one point five to one point six million dollars a year compared to one point one, one point two right now. So there, there has been significant benefit from that and um, you see in in other counties and municipalities that because their pension is is underfunded, they are having to pay extremely large legacy costs to fund that.
I remember with that too.
And interest, and interest on that unfunded money. I mean, when we took this bond, basically we caught up, we got caught up, get behind kind of.
Right.
And then we have a fixed payment and it'll be done after.
You're right.
So that's when they really did the bond money or the funds will accumulate better here, you know, as far as, because we won't have that bond payment. And we, like you say, what is the twenty twenty six would be paid. We borrowed the money to pay that off. Yeah, cheap money.
Uh, and one of the other, one of the other big uh, challenges we had in in creating this budget is we had a lot of our capital projects in our current fiscal year that just were undeliverable. We were ready to move forward with them. We were ready to purchase them and they get pushed back um, twelve eighteen months. Uh, we even purchasing police vehicles, I'm sure that the sheriff can attest. Um, I, I had to go rounds with, friendly rounds with our auditor uh, the last time because we were ordering vehicles and getting them sixteen months later. So they wanted to see the payment and delivery match up in the same fiscal year. It just wasn't possible. Uh, and we're fortunate enough to have auditors that were understanding with the current environment, but we're seeing that for almost everything right now. So we had a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar capital projects uh, budget for this current fiscal year that we're in. And of that, we've spent less than two hundred thousand dollars. We've ordered items like the uh, chiller that sits out between the sheriff's office and the courthouse. But we're not expected to see that until January of twenty twenty three, I think. So, and we started that project as soon as the fiscal year started. We hired an engineer to help figure out what we needed for that. So um, that's what, that's some of the challenges. So um, revenues remain unchanged from draft one. We're still sitting at approximately fourteen point eight million dollars. Uh, primarily funded by our general operating village. Our department, there's a high chart for the sources, department generated uh, grants, transfers, taxes. I found it very interesting that the percentages lined up exactly with our, with our previous uh, budget at our previous draft, but last year's budget. Okay, so like I said, we're projected to have a surplus of three hundred and eight thousand dollars. Uh, largely, well, not largely, but that is completely related to um, the county being able to use ARP funds to fund some of its capital projects. Uh, salaries, wages and benefits are represented sixty percent of the general fund revenues. From looking around at our peers and and other counties and municipalities, we want to stay within somewhere between fifty eight and sixty two percent uh, for our salaries. That's maintainable. Uh, when we start to creep above sixty two percent of our revenues or our salaries, it doesn't leave enough money for the rest of our operating costs for uh, able to leverage debt or able to um, afford our retirement costs. For the first time, this budget includes an increase to office supplies. Uh, this is something that for the last five years, we have been able to decrease every year. Um, we actually created a position, uh, procurement position to come in and look at contracts and look at best places to buy things in bulk if necessary and share it between departments. And every year we've been able to go down, but in um, uh, inflation just caught up to us this year and uh, departments asked for slight bumps in office supplies. And that's not something that I felt like I could deny that because there is a lot of data to back up. But things are just costing more than they used to. Postage in itself has gone up incredible amount. And it doesn't seem like that would be something that would be a large expense to us. But the clerk's office and the courts, um, they, they can go through a lot. They, they do a lot of mailings. They're required to do a lot of mailings by law. Uh, items requiring continued monitoring are ARP related projects that we have out in the community. Um, or in our contract monitoring, I get sometimes daily emails from um, our sub recipients asking for guidance and how they can spend this or what the contract needs to look like. Um, and all that needs to be documented for our audit because that money is not going to be spent by us and not in our possession. Uh, the childcare fund again, uh, Jennifer Wood spoke to you about that a couple of weeks ago. She's expressed her concerns along with the sheriff about how it's been increasingly difficult in the current environment to find uh, beds for uh, behavioral rehabilitation for juveniles. Uh, and so Gracia County owner into a contract to rent a bed full time. Uh, and and this is going to be something that we're not gonna know if this is going to be a money saving feature or if it's going to cost us additional money, but we know that we needed to have something locked in and we're gonna continue to monitor this throughout the year. Um, and the county landfill continues to be a challenge as the state and federal governments uh, do not provide funding for us uh, to help monitor and maintain that, yet restrictions and and guidelines, uh, inspections continue to require us to uh, keep it up to date. So that's something that we always keep an eye on. I'm gonna skip down to the portion of the budget that, well, go through capital improvement plan again real quick. I know that throughout the last week I had a couple of questions on that. Um, I do not believe that there's anything on there that the board is not familiar with. Majority of these have been approved already and just pushed forward because of delays in the supply chain. Uh, but I will give you a moment to comment or have any questions on the capital improvement plan because I do know um, that that is something that Ian raised discussion. That is on page eleven if we're following along in your hard copy.
It's not a lot of work.
Eleven in this book, right here?
Mine's fifteen. I did have a question.
Okay.
For the drain commissioner.
Yes.
Um, it says here carpet replacement, is that for the drain office?
Nope. The only thing on the drain commission is drain office improvements and that is in twenty three, twenty four.
My page is fifteen, that's what was in there.
Oh, you probably, you have a, a print off from, okay. Do you have your hard copy? I was giving to you two weeks ago.
We have one tonight.
We have two sitting out here tonight.
I did, but I, I now have this, the draft two, that, the hard copy.
I think that carpet replacement that you're noticing is under courthouse. So look underneath drain commission, it says courthouse. Then second line down is carpet replacement.
Oh, okay. I see. You're right, right here. Improvements, okay. Drain office improvement. I just assumed because there was a big spacer. Thank you.
Thank you.
So what improvements would the drain, the reason I'm asking that is that I think they, how, we bought that building, what, two thousand sixteen? And it was pretty well furnished. We went through and remodeled it and everything. So I wondered what twenty thousand dollars, actually I thought all this other stuff was for it. So I'm glad to find that.
Yes, twenty three, twenty four. That's not this year. Okay, we're, we're projecting that out in the year.
The project, the synopsis of the project is to take the outside of the building and not make it look like a pole bar and make it look more like an office building.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so this has been something that has been on the drain commissioner's wish list for several years.
When I looked at it, I guess the way I feel about it is this, is that we spend a lot, we spent a lot of money already for new carpet, painting offices, buying vehicles, this type of thing. And I'd like to see us maybe cut back a little bit in, in any area that we can cut back. Also, when we approve this, what happens is that all of a sudden you just go ahead and do it. Used to be in the past, if you approve something like this. If you approve something like this, you still brought it back to the commissioners. It was brought back. And then we'd say, you know, what is the economy like? You know, should we go ahead with this project? I s- and I'd like to see that because of the times and because of.
They're bringing us back bids when they get it done. They're bringing us back a bid that
Well, it used to.
We have we approved it in the budget for you know, probably if you look at like the courthouse painting that 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 we're talking about there, I don't know, we can get it done for five grand. They'll bring us back a bid and when they get somebody to do it, if it's six thousand dollars, we'll have to approve. If it's six thousand or if it's three thousand, we'll have to approve.
That's correct. That's correct. Commissioner Bunting, you not only um uh we of course, we watch the dollars and we bring that to you. But the other thing that we bring to you is um uh request that you approve the vendor. So we bring these back to you. Carpet and uh carpeting, we bring to you painting. Uh, there hasn't been anything brought to you because last year it was all done in house. So looking for a way to save money as you suggest, uh, we did that and had it done in house. So there was not a reason to bring it to you folks, but uh, we have brought every single one of these back to you.
I guess I would. I guess I'm saying to you that, you know, we were looking at cutting the millages and stuff. But I'd like to see us cut more of some of the work that we're doing around the, I mean, if it's possible, um, maybe do a little bit of rechecking this over. And if it's something that we can get through another year, maybe we would do that. I mean, I know some things like the roof would have to be repaired. That's another thing, too. You know, it seems like we're constantly repairing the roof. And I was, I have a friend who just had a problem with his roof. He goes, you don't ever repair them. You just do the whole roof over. Otherwise, one leak leads to another leak to another leak. That seems like that's what we've been doing with the courthouse. Seems like we get a leak this year. Every year we seem to have a leak. It seems like.
The budget though is just a planning tool. This is just a planning tool to give us a sense of direction and and awareness of what's coming up. But each item uh as we spend on each item, it's it's just like trace itself that, you know, we we put it out for bids. Uh, we have to approve the the whole process. They try and do the the cheapest bid possible, you know, for for what we expect the quality of work to be. But this is just a planning tool to just give us just the direction.
Yeah, we look for things that are falling apart. We don't look to re, I mean, we don't look to replace brand new carpet. We're going to replace carpet that is twenty years old. Um, you know.
Even that, I think twenty years old, a carpet, you can get them shampooed every year and they look, I have a carpet that's forty years old and still looks new. But I have a shampooed every couple of times a year.
Some of our offices have very heavy traffic.
Traffic in your house and sure as these places. I got buildings too. I day it it.
Yeah.
This is minimal stuff. It's.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'd like to see maybe make sure that this year we we look at things a little bit more closer than what we have. Like I said.
Commissioner Bunting, Commissioner Bunting, we have, as I've uh explained a number of times, we have a cyclical uh carpet replacement schedule. And it's based on not how dirty the carpet is, but uh the wear of the carpet. Uh, because we have replaced carpeting that has pieces pulling up. It's a safety issue and concern about staff tripping over it. So we we have a schedule based on the condition of the carpet. I, you know, we created a cyclical maintenance schedule for both painting and carpeting so that you're spending a little bit each year and keeping up with it each year. Rather than all at once, the entire building needs to be recarpeted or the entire building needs to be painted. That is poor management and poor planning, and it's a huge budget uh budget issue. So by taking a little bit, little chunks each year uh and maintaining uh areas uh according to need, uh, I would submit to you that that is the smart budget move. And um uh, you you don't want this building to to look like, uh, you know, it's in shambles. This is a jewel of the community. And with our maintenance work, we do that planning and hold that value also. I can assure you, we look at every penny, every uh every nickel uh and look to not spend a nickel more than we have to. We have a competitive procurement process that we use religiously. And uh, and of course, you're aware of that because we often bring you the various uh quotes or bids that we get and you're able to uh and you see that competitive process. So I just want to uh make a short statement longer by saying that uh we appreciate your view of uh careful stewardship of of the dollars and uh we we share that that value with you.
I guess I I don't want you to be defensive over this, but what I'm trying to say is that we are going to enter into some more rough, even worse times, I think, this next couple of years. And I would just like to see us make sure that we're double checking. Do we really need to do this? And if we don't, let's put it off. There are people out there that have to pay their taxes and if they don't pay their taxes, they lose their homes, of course. And there there's a lot of homes that would love to put new carpet down or paint or fix their roof or I can give you a good example. I work at the schools. We don't have money to do a lot of stuff and work for a lot less money than what our courts do here. Our courthouse does. So anyway, but I'm just making a statement. I'm just saying I'd like to put a a few extra eyes on what we're spending and how we're spending that. And if we can save or we'll put it off maybe one more year just to see how the economy goes. I'm hearing all the time. I'm getting text messages, continuous, not text message, emails saying that we're going to have a shortage of groceries, a shortage of um um uh energy such as gasoline and stuff like this. Just like to see us be a little bit more conscientious about what we're how we're spending our money or the taxpayers' money. I mean, anyway, that's all I got to say about it.
Uh, Chris, I'm seeing under the courthouse for a truck in the next year, not the uh twenty three, twenty four, thirty nine thousand. What's that projected for?
That particular vehicle, I believe that vehicle is uh for buildings and grounds.
Buildings ground, okay. And I'm seeing a uh uh LED lighting for the jail and the courthouse of a hundred thousand, but I would think that would project to save us some utility cost. Big time.
There would also be.
That looks good.
Uh refund um possibility to consumers also. Uh, several of our projects that we've done over the past couple of years, we've received some substantial refunds for using energy efficient um HVACs and such, so.
Of course, energy has a consumers' energy has a rebate program and when we do some of these projects, we could submit uh paperwork and get some refunds back. We, in fact, we recently got oh approximately eight hundred dollars back for the um wrong piece of paper for projects that were recently done. Uh, so we're we're pursuing those whenever they're available. You're absolutely right. The LED lighting should save us uh a a small fortune in
Right.
uh costs. And we're going to do that gradually. For example, as the health department building gets done, we're going to add the lighting and so we're going to do it in in bits and pieces.
Chris, you want to go forward or?
Oh, I have one more question for you, Chris. We I talked with you yesterday. Now, I talked about the um animal control getting another truck. And I see it's thirty five thousand dollars to buy another truck and because of all the animals they have to pick up every day. And um, but then you said, what, what people don't see is that. And we buy a truck for the animal control. The old truck comes down to down to the courthouse for maybe the permits office or the courthouse or wherever it need, wherever they need it. But I see you got thirty five thousand up here. You got thirty nine thousand down here for the courthouse truck.
Mm hmm. Now, um
So how are we?
Recruitment officer, Caitlin Lomarche, she uh has a plan for each vehicle that we purchase. So when a new vehicle is purchased, if it is still in good condition and the miles are not outrageous, by outrageous, I mean uh over a hundred and fifty thousand miles, she finds a new home for that. We do have a becking order where vehicles get passed down from one department to another. Um, and where that particular truck will get passed down to, I don't have that answer in front of me right now, but I do know the plan exists. And if you have a question about why a vehicle would be more expensive in twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four than it is in twenty two, twenty three, it's just an estimate for inflation costs.
I could also add, I can also add, buildings and grounds is usually at the bottom of the food chain. So they get the oldest and most beat up vehicles. What they are needing, though, is they are needing a truck that, I don't know all the terms. It can carry more weight. They also need something with a lift on it. Because they generally salt is not delivered and some other materials are not delivered. Uh, we go out and get them. And so uh they need something with that with that lift on it. So and once they get that, they'll just drive it into the ground. They have often recently gotten the hand downs from animal control. If they get their own pickup truck, you know, they they still have another truck that they uh use and will need to continue to to be in the the cycle. But yeah, the bottom line is that explains why buildings and grounds, we're hoping to get them a new truck rather than uh for them to continue to get all the hand me downs. But they're, you know, only the drain commissioner's truck and maybe some with the courts. I'm not sure about that. Those are the only vehicles that don't get recycled if we possibly can. We've even taken the sheriff's uh old vehicles and worked them through. Um, we've had our equalization folks drive old um uh sheriff's vehicles. So uh, there there is no single use commodity uh in this county.
Uh, when you buy these vehicles, we ensure the vehicle for whoever's driving it.
We have liability insurance on it. We do not have collision insurance on it. We're self insured when it comes to collision. Uh, our particular insurance company will only give us a ten thousand dollar deductible. So and when we opted out of that collision insurance, we did a study to see how many accidents we had been in in the most recent years that were over ten thousand. And there were none that cost us over ten thousand. So we opted out of that and for the collision.
What is the, do you have a total of all the insurances for all the vehicles or?
Uh, not, that would be part of the insurance stacking, man.
Yeah, I just wonder, it must be pretty high, isn't it, for all the vehicles that we that we buy?
Uh, the vehicles, at least of it, actually, you know, we have buildings and property and uh, we can provide you our uh application document, but you know, vehicles are really not the largest expense. We have a bunch of buildings full of all kinds of stuff and those are the bigger costs.
Yeah.
And I think that's my last question. On that page.
We have about ten pages of these schedules for various departments. Elected official compensation on page twenty two has been updated. You will note that the sheriff's erect compensation level on page twenty two is eighty six thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars. I did not update his individual budget worksheet, which is is buried probably in page like seventy five ish. That still says eighty three thousand four hundred and eighty six dollars. That is an error in this budget book. And we'll ask, once we leave this public hearing, that we adopt an amendment to correct the sheriff's salary in the budget. Um, and I will remind you of those numbers and what that is at at the appropriate. Angie and the clerk, we missed the uh medical examiner permit fee.
Yes, I sent an email over to admin on Wednesday after our last meeting. I'm sorry, I didn't follow through to make sure that we added a cremation fee of fifty dollars under miscellaneous. So we need to add that.
Definitely. I had to do that right away and I had to add it to the book.
We had addressed it, but it just didn't make it this far.
Um, fortunately, right after our last meeting, I was out for kind of an extended period of time. I'm sure you can hear that I have some lingering COVID issues that and somebody looks at this and says, I'm not paying this. I didn't. Okay, moving on to page thirty.
You know, I have one more question. I our pages are different. So um, numbers are, I'm hitting minus page twenty six.
So you could, when he's talking about thirty, if you could look at these numbers and not these numbers.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Okay, so if you could flip forward.
I still have a question on page twenty two.
Good.
And then I'll go to this next page. Okay, here you have a list of all all the salaries for all the elected officials. Uh, can you, can you also put together um all of the department heads and what how much their salary is also?
We do have a department head salary schedule, yes. Do you want that individually or would you like that in the budget book?
Um, it's up to the other commissioners. Um, I think it's good to have it because we're because of one of the races, I have nothing to look at to see what their um wages are.
I want to ask for a department head salary scale.
Oh, thank you very much.
You think I'm in there not paying attention, don't you? It's for one of the agenda items, so. Yeah, thanks for buying us.
But no, what I'm asking for, this is great, but I'm asking for how much each department head makes. For instance, how much does um uh, well, like say um the courts.
So you want to know which step on that salary scale each department head is because all the department heads are listed there.
Yes, but I want to know exactly. It doesn't tell me who makes what.
So which step they're on in the grade?
Yes.
Okay, maybe I can get that before we're done, but
Yeah.
You can see the parameters there.
Okay, yeah, this helps too, but I'd like to know, like, when we're given a raise to somebody, what step are the uh that I like to know before time? Like, say, I'm trying to think of some of them. Um
The the increases in salary to department heads function along two lines. Like every other employee on their anniversary date, they receive a step increase. Sorry to pressure. Uh, oh, no, they got me. They get a one step increase on their anniversary date. The other increases come when you folks, as you did, I think at the last meeting, agreed to give every other employee what was negotiated with unions. Every time that is done, we adjust those salary scales to make sure the numbers are correct. That's how it's done. That's how it's always been done.
Okay, a good example of what I'm looking for is like, for instance, how much does Tom Clark make? How much does Dan at nine one one make? How much does um?
Nine one one is not there because they're a separate entity. However, uh, you can see that that the uh animal control uh director is a grade one. You see pay grade one? Okay, so somewhere between step one and step six, I would just need to go in and figure out what step each of these folks are at. That's that's his his salary scale. So so it's no mystery what everybody makes. It's no mystery how they get their increases and all of those issues come to this board.
Well, I wondered, this is great having this because it tells you exactly how like the county clerk, the drain commission, district of deeds, but it would be nice to have all of the head departments.
What she's telling you is that moves every year.
This is, this is all department.
Yes, well, every year we could get a new sheet then maybe.
Every year it's available to you. Every year it's, you know, you just have to ask for it. So.
I'm asking for it. So it doesn't necessarily have to be in the budget, but I'd like to have a copy of it.
Anytime you let us know and we'll get that.
Okay, thank you.
It is this completely transparent. There are no secrets about how pay rates get set. And in fact, we talked a lot about setting pay rates in the last comp studies. And it's no secret how it's considered anyways. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, page thirty.
Do you have a question on page thirty or am I explaining page thirty? Page thirty is one of the schedules that uh the board adopts as their budget. This is uh the first column, the twenty twenty two, twenty three budget, the expenditure column. Uh, that is the expenditures that we're looking for, reading for. And what the budget law for in Michigan requires us to present to the board is how are we going to pay for those expenditures? So the next five columns, local taxes, department generated, federal and state, uh, total revenue and then inter fund transfers. Those are the items that uh Those are the items that uh, that those are the revenue side of how we pay for the expenditures for each one of those funds. When we see that there is a number populated in the far right column, which is uh titled fund balance. That means we are spending more money in this fund than what we're going to bring in in this particular year. That means we want to make sure that that fund has uh money in the bank account to cover for the expenditures that go over what the revenues are going to be. For example, Fund Two-O-Five, you see that Central Dispatch is um projected to spend one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars more than they're going to bring in. That is because they have a debt payment that is due that they've been saving up for in December for their uh new equipment that they purchased two years ago. Um, so we want to make sure Central Dispatch has a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in the bank to be able to cover dipping into that. So I go down to the next page, thirty-one. This is the projection of fund balance. The majority of fund balance is cash in the bank. I look at Fund Two-O-Five, Central Dispatch. I see a projected fund balance at the end of next budget year of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Because that number is positive, that means they have enough money in the bank to cover the two hundred or the hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar deficit projected. If that number was negative, we would know that they did not have enough money to cover that. We went over these schedules in detail in the previous meeting. I welcome any questions related to them or any funds, any general fund departments, um. And I, I'm really, yeah, what, what can I do?
Now, here's the library fund.
Okay.
Thousand, nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Which library is that for? Is that is for all of them or how do you?
What are you talking about? Fund Two-seventy-one?
Seven-twenty-one fund. This, I don't have my glasses on, I was looking for. Seven, yeah, seven-twenty-one library fund. It's got nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And this is the side where they'd be short, right? And now.
This is the library fund for the courts.
Oh, that's okay.
So there's another library fund, Fund Two-seven-one. If you look at Fund Two-seven-one, that is the library millage fund.
Okay.
That is the custodial fund where we collect the millage and then it is distributed out to the local libraries.
Yeah, how can you have law library at the top, twenty-five thousand? You have it down here again, library. Nine thousand. Why would there be two? Is there two libraries?
The law library fund is a fund that we are required to store a specific funding source and a specific fee with that we get to keep in order to ensure that we purchase the most up-to-date law books every year so that um it is available to both defendants and plaintiffs. They maintain the law library, which is also used for using for Zoom um meetings and such also.
Awesome, thank you.
Well, um, I'll just end our presentation with the historic and highlights. As I had mentioned, we are looking at a three hundred and eight thousand dollar surplus due to the board allowing the county to use the remaining five hundred and seventy thousand dollar ARP funds. Um, our expenditures and revenues um are, are built up from a prior year primarily due to healthcare and retirement costs. Uh, we're not looking to purchase additional services or enter into additional contracts. Expenses are not going up in, in that manner. It's, they're, they're going up in categories that unfortunately do not have very much control over at this time. Be happy to take any more questions from the board members or from anybody here that might be here for the budget hearing.
I think it looks good, Chris. I've made a lot of changes since, just the salaries from, probably the last two weeks.
You asking for questions on the rest of the book or are you just on this page?
For the rest of the book.
Okay.
I was. Any out there have a question on the budget?
Chris, I was looking in several places where on our retirement line uh, we had some significant increases in certain departments.
Yeah.
So am I understanding correctly that we have some additional increase in retired people pulling from that fund and it's being targeted to that department, correct?
No, that is um actually not how it is calculated. Um, I go through and I update the retirement charges to the departments every two years. It is a very intricate process where I actually have to go through and determine of the retirees who is still alive. Um, so if there are forty-six people that retired from the sheriff's office that are still alive or are still working there that will get a pension. And there are a hundred and twenty people that Bracha County owes a pension to. I will divide forty-six by one hundred and twenty. And that percentage is what the sheriff's office gets charged for our retirement costs for this year. Our retirement costs for this year include our pension bond fund or our pension bond payment, which is approximately eight hundred and ten thousand dollars. And our monthly payments to MERS for un, un, um unfunded portion of, of our pension fund. Total, that's uh one million one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So if the sheriff's office had thirty percent of the retirees or current employees that get a pension, his office would get charged thirty percent of that one million one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And then I would recalculate that again next year.
Okay, well, just for instance, I'm on page one oh nine. Commission on Aging.
Yeah.
Uh, last year's budget on the retirement line is forty-one thousand. The suggested budget is seventy-one thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars, a seventy-six percent increase. Did we have more people all of a sudden in the system on that?
You said you're on page one oh nine, right?
One oh nine. Uh, Commission on Aging Fund Two-seventy-three.
Yep, so we're like forty-one thousand dollars up to seventy-one thousand dollars.
Seventy-six percent increase.
I changed the way that we charged COA. COA has fourteen different departments within it. This zero, okay, the, the second string of numbers, zero, 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 that indicates the department. Previously, I split out all of the retirement cost to each COA department. So if we go to the next page, we have Department Seven-O-One, which is caregiver training. You see that there is a retirement amount budgeted for one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. I did not charge each of those individual departments that retirement uh, the next fiscal year. It was just to make accounting easy. We don't get reimbursed for it from the feds. Um, it comes, it gets paid for by our village. So there was no need for me to break it out between the fourteen different departments. I just charged it to one spot.
Okay, that makes sense.
A good catch, Chuck.
That was really good, I, yeah.
Had he looking for, for him. I said, that's not gonna happen with us.
Chris, the manner in which you talked about how you break, break out the retirement costs is very similar to the way you also allocate indirect costs. It's, it's almost the opposite, but the same manner.
Right, yeah, we do, but we, we contract that service out. I do the retirement myself.
I'm good. I'm ready to move on.
Uh, one more thing I was, I'm looking at here. Uh, I'm on page eighty-one. Department nine ninety appropriations.
Yep.
Um.
What page did you say?
Eighty-one. Department nine ninety. Um, I'm seeing the health department payment that we make to the health department. What's the two hundred thousand for mental health? Who's that going to?
It's the integrated health systems.
Integrated health, okay.
Yep, George, you probably know more about that than me. I think he sits on the board.
That's our portion every year.
Okay.
That portion they send into the state so they can get their portion of the federal dollars. It requires that much to get the federal dollars. Which is almost a million dollars.
You don't have anything down for a cigarette tax. We no longer get the tax for that.
Ever since I've been here, that's been blank. I don't, so, no.
Wasn't that a one-time settlement, probably several years back?
We were supposed to get taxes from it. The taxes that we give from it goes to mental health. Um, yeah, or substance abuse, I'm sorry, substance abuse. I'll look through my old ones, my old um budget books and see how that was, but you know. But um it wasn't very much. I think it was like fifty thousand.
Yeah, I believe that was rolled into um another distribution by another name. I can't tell you what, but uh, that's my, my memory of that.
Okay, thank you.
Substance abuse. I've run into a yellow slip, so you're good.
Chris, I think you did a nice job too. Oh, I have a question for um Tracy. I was trying to figure out, you have seven employees in your staff. I can't really think of, I can think of five, but I can't think of the seven. Who are the two extras? Would it be uh?
Kind of direct supervision over uh each of the staff uh here in the administration unit. Also, certain department heads report to me, specifically the animal control officer, our building officer or building administrator. Um, I'm going through my list here.
On the paper here, it says seven though. It says department administrator is seven.
I don't know. I don't have. Chris? What are we looking at?
That would be Chris and Sheila.
What page are you looking at?
And Becky. It's page twenty-three.
Chris, you know why that was a seven and who that includes?
Oh, the department staff.
Sheila prepared that for me. Um, I don't think she's here today.
No, uh-uh. Uh, but Commissioner Bunting, I can't explain that number, uh, because if that is meant only to include the administration staff, uh, that would be the group here, but uh I, I just don't know who that includes. If that includes the IT director, that, that could be one. Uh, but again, I do have a, a number of department heads that are direct reports. Although again, I can see that it would be a little odd to have them under administration. If there's not a separate line for IT, that's likely.
There was a separate one for, was it an equalizer? There's one there, let's see. There is information down, there's one for IT.
I do know at one point, um, our, our janitorial crew did charge to the administration department and that may be an oversight that they should, that they should have been moved from administration to buildings and grounds for this.
That's very likely. Yes, that's very likely. It, they have been moved under the uh, into Buildings and Grounds Department. And you're right, they did, used to be oddly connected to administration and apparently getting supervision from, from this department, so. Uh, and I suspect that's it and, and that's a great catch, so I think we'll probably get that changed.
Okay, I'll put the, how many, that's another five. I was thinking it was five. Okay. Okay, I think I'm.
Everybody at home wants to know what you have to say.
We're live online.
Um, I, I just had two. One was, because it wasn't in what I printed off, if you could clarify the number you had for the library knowledge, possible? The, the one you were putting down first, it kept the twenty-twenty-two the same?
What page is that?
Oh, she's the one, the present, presentation that Chris had off. This thing.
Yeah, I'm not gonna ask anyone. Thank you.
Okay. Looking for confirmation of the current military, right? Is that what the?
My, when I'm ready, you have options.
Right.
So, any other discussion? Uh, we, I think we can move on to public comment.
I'm moving.
Is there any, well, no, I think we're still under the budget hearing, the way I read it. That there's a public comment section on, in this hearing. So any member of the public wish to make comment? Matt, you see anybody online?
Nope, I don't see anybody connected in.
Okay, all right. Then I think we're open for a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Don't move.
Motion by Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Smith. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Aye, posnay. Motion passed. We're back in regular session. Um, I, uh, Hegan, you're up. I believe.
So basically, I just have the uh, the L forty-two-nine, the uh, tax rate request form. Uh, Chris has already done a great job explaining all the millage rates and everything, so I don't know if there's any more discussion on that or any questions for me.
Well, I think we're back at having to make a decision on what we're talking about, right, John? As to what rates we're gonna be wanting to approve.
I move we're leaving rates the same.
I'll second that.
Hey, a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bunting to leave the rates where they're at. You want to tell us what those numbers are?
Oh, yeah, yep. Uh, road patrol, that would be point four-four-eight-six. That would be the maximum allowable mileage. Uh, parks would be uh, point three-four-nine-four. That's also the maximum. Uh, seniors would be uh, point six-four-nine-two. That's maximum. Uh, ag econ would be point four-five-zero-zero, and that's less than their maximum of uh, point five. And then library would be point four-four, or four-nine-nine-four. That would be keeping those as we've left in the past.
Hegan, tell me the sheriff again, because I got four-four-nine-four.
Uh,
four-four, I got four-four-eight-six there.
Uh, four-four-eight-six, um.
Okay.
I was just looking at my, yeah, four four nine four.
Oh, the four four nine four is the millage rate that was originally voted in for the road patrol, but it's been reduced to point four four eight six.
So that should be four four eight six.
That was the headland reduction there.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. Yeah. The road patrol and the parks villages were both subject to the reduction fractions here.
Just a, a quick question, Keegan. When does the, when, when do you get it? Looked as wrong if they had the amendment, they're coming in.
Usually, right after the assessment rolls are finalized, we do our county deposition in April, and then we usually get right into the, it's a form called the L forty twenty-eight, gives us all our reduction fractions, usually in May. We have those. I believe they are due the June first, please, when they're due to the state, but we usually know ahead of time.
And just your best educated guess, would you imagine that we're going to have a heavy adjustment downward next year as well?
It's hard to say. If our tax base keeps on increasing, without us suffering much losses in property value, I would say it probably would be decreased again, but seeing right now, it's hard to, I guess, predict. Thank you. Absolutely.
Any discussion on this motion? I know I would still like to move forward with your idea, John, hoping that the general budget would fall into line with the same ideas. Any other discussion? So then, why don't we do a roll call vote without objection?
Can you repeat the motion again, too, please?
Approved by Smith, second by Bunting to approve the L forty twenty-nine as presented with the following. Road at point four four eight six, parks at point three four nine four, seniors point six four nine two, egg and what else is that? What is that called?
Egg and, oh, economic development?
Economics development at point four five, and the library at point four four nine four.
Four nine nine four for the library.
Four four nine four.
Four nine nine.
Yep, four nine nine four. This key word that'll need to be signed in the middle here to write on the right-hand side of it.
Okay, before we proceed with this, a yes vote is to approve the maximum millages. And a no vote would be not to.
Commissioner Bunting, yes. Commissioner Lumberman?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
No. Motion passed. Three to two. Okay, next, we're up. We're back to the budget.
So we are. Move to approve the budget as presented.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by?
We do need some amendments, though.
Okay, yep.
Do you want me to read what I have?
Please.
So, second, to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, Grashit County, second, I touched my screen. Budget with the authorized millages, with the change in the clerk's fees, with a miscellaneous cremation fee of fifty dollars, and the sheriff's salary to be changed to eighty-six thousand eight fifteen annually.
In the budget line.
In the budget line, Adam.
That sounds good. That sounds very good.
Yeah, a few grand money.
That's what I meant, the budget.
So your motion is as amended?
I amend that motion, too.
I'll still second.
And you still second, okay. And I made the second.
To the budget, to the budget resolution? The budget resolution states all those things, but it's under resolution.
Two ninety-one.
You gotta put budget resolution. That has all of it.
Twenty-two dash two thirty. What is that?
Uh, what, twenty-two dash two ninety-one.
So I just added that Grashit County.
And once again, that's what you said. And that's what you seconded, definitely.
That's all I said then, but also.
So we should have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lumberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes. And pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks for all the hard work, Chris. We're actually, now we can go to the consent calendar. Anybody like to move any, pull anything out of the consent calendar?
Will we, subject consent calendar?
Motion by Commissioner Bailey, do we have a second to approve the consent calendar? Second by Commissioner Lumberman. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed. So now, we, no administrators report tonight. Commissioner's report.
I had a meeting early in the week, last week, and got a text message later on Tuesday that I could have been exposed to COVID. So I didn't attend any meetings last week, but I, you know, found out Friday that I'm all clear, everything's all good. The only thing that I have to mention is since this is a budget meeting. Our number one problem in, in the budget that Chris identified, I believe, was the, the rising healthcare costs. And I did ask Sheila to get us some numbers. Can we get some kind of umbrella coverage? So that as county, individual county employees, if we would have several of them, they have a very expensive healthcare cost, is there some kind of umbrella policy that we could purchase that would kick in at a certain level to protect, yeah? So.
We had that problem last year, obviously.
Right, right. And I would just mention that when we look at a three hundred thousand dollar budget surplus. I, I just think we, we still need to talk about it. You know, it's something that, if Sheila can get us some numbers, I, I would like to look at it some point. So that, that's all I have.
That makes sense, because it, it draws down, obviously, when you're self-insured, all the catastrophic ones add up and get spread across everybody's cost, and therefore, everybody's cost goes up. Three, and this is what happened this year. And if, I agree, if we can get a lot, a, a, an umbrella coverage for the, for the extra liability. It doesn't harm to take a look at it. It makes sense. It makes sense. Now, I gotta feel that's gonna be expensive.
I do, too.
But, but I think it's worth looking at.
And you talked to her. She's working on that. Good. And?
Good idea.
Anything else, George?
At a health board meeting. Board of Health meeting attended on the eighth, because we couldn't have one in August.
Unfortunately, as the second day of school, I can't, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get out for next week, but.
So, we had to have that meeting. There wasn't a quorum, but we had to approve some expensive items. There was four freezers and some IT items that cost. It was in the budget, but we have to approve the cost, so, but that's why we had to have this meeting. And you and Dwight were the only ones weren't there. We had just had a quorum. And other than that, no, I'm, I've finally got my mother. She's in Florida now. Now my sister's dying now. I'll take care of her today.
All righty, and I will be able to make next week's health board meeting.
It's a minute or two, by the way.
Who is it?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Well, I might be able to get back in time for something. Very good, and I'm just been very busy on the election. Jan?
I had one meeting with Bethany Township on Tuesday last week. Think I had another meeting, but I can't remember where it was at. So, anyway, I, if I remember, I'll tell you the next time.
Met with New Haven and Newark last week. New Haven is just kinda plugging along. Newark, they're working on getting a couple more windmills from the Fulton project that are coming that way. And Newark doing some work on their building and trying to get some stuff fixed up on their hall.
And I, one more thing, we have the township. Township meetings tomorrow night at what? At the, at Pine River Hall.
Okay, also.
Sure, there was a meeting.
Also, tomorrow night is a meet and greet at Masonic Home for any, any commissioners or any elected officials running, or anybody running for anything. It's tomorrow night at six thirty. I was surprised that Tim and Dave had not heard about it. They sent me a notice, and I accepted to go to it. And they expected to be about a hundred people or less. And also, the residents said that we could talk with them and, and if they had any questions or anything like that. So George, probably, that may be something you might wanna go to.
Well, tomorrow, the meeting, some meeting is tomorrow night at six o'clock at Pine River Township Hall.
Yeah, this is at six thirty the same night. Did you get a notice on it? Yeah, I can't believe that.
You're probably the, maybe, maybe you were running in that Elma district, so maybe that's why you got it. I don't know.
Said, says, anybody, any elected officials and anybody running.
Yeah, I didn't get any.
Yeah, I think that's odd.
Dan, did, uh, you get the email that Ralph sent to all the commissioners that he's trying to do a story on the Michigan Works situation?
Yeah, I did get it, and I, I gotta tell you, my car broke down this, this last week. I got stranded. And so I have not really done anything with my emails or anything.
The gentleman who talked to us two weeks ago, did he resign?
Yeah, he, Ralph really needs to get a hold of Michigan Works or.
He's working.
Yeah, because I'm not a mediator for that, between the two. I just know a little bit what's going on.
Did the?
Good idea.
Yes, he did. He was going to resign, and it was a good time for him to, to get out. There is, there is, he's gonna go to court. I know that, and that there's a judge now, and that's what I believe. See, I hate to say it, because I don't know. I just, I just know that I went to one meeting, and they said that there was a judge and that, that there I thought they said something about being in Detroit, but I don't, I don't know. I, I really can't say because.
We're in a public meeting, Dan, so.
Yeah, I'm in a public meeting there, and I was in a, but a meeting here, and what you heard, I heard, and so.
Okay.
We'll go from there, but I really don't, I'm not gonna be the in-between for anybody that wanna know anything, because I don't really. Things change too quickly. But also, back to your question. It's a busy time for all of us, and especially for myself. I have doctor bills, I mean, doctor appointments, and I've got a car that's broke down. And then I'm also working at the schools and your founding commission stuff, so I don't see all the emails. If you have something very important, give me a quick call and I can pull it up.
Okay, let's move on to new business. Is Bill on the line?
No. I kind of expected Bill to be here this evening, but I think he's gotten hung up in some professional development training, and so I'm very happy to present this. This is a very simple issue, really. This is the agreement that you folks review and approve every year. What it does is it, it's essentially the contract that we enter with MSU Extension Service and provide education services to the community. And to administer a four-H program in our community. The agreement clearly lays out, but to be true, there is no change this year in what, he provides what. What does change from year to year is the numbers that are entered. You recall that MSU Extension and Greater Grashit share a millage. Greater Grashit takes, has a two-thirds percentage of the take on that and MSU Extension, one-third. So the numbers are entered that reflect what their share of the millage would be and indicates what those dollars are used for. So, again, no change from past years, other than the numbers that were entered. Something that you, I don't wanna overcomplicate this, but something that we've been transitioning to for about five or six years. I was engaged with Bill's predecessor on this issue. We have some county staff up there that are, are hired and working on the four-H program. But it's kind of weird, because we have no ability to monitor, oversee. We had no idea. But they weren't on our salary scale. We had no idea if they were subject to our policies. I mean, that was just an untenable situation. So over time, staff have been transitioning into the MSU Extension employment and under that umbrella. And so you also will see some of that in these agreements. I can take questions.
Is this an annual contract?
Yes.
Yes. Some questions? Motion by Commissioner Smith to approve this, support by Commissioner Bailey. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Next, we're moving on to Hope House contract agreement. We got, you doing this, Chris?
Yes. Executive Director Jake Gregory was the sir that presented and requested ARP funds from you approximately, oh, fourteen months ago. In order to fund the fiscal year for him, which will be ending in nine thirty, twenty twenty-two. The board approved two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in ARP, which was sent to Hope House. I offered to present this for him tonight, because I knew that we would have a jam-packed session, and I didn't want him to have to wait around an hour, hour and a half to speak. He does plan on coming to the next meeting to give the board an update on how operations went for Hope House. And the feedback that I have gotten from him so far has been very positive. I know some of you have also spoke with them, too, and, and heard some, some great things. But the request that I have before you right now is Hope House has forty thousand dollars of ARP funds still left over that they do not expect to be able to spend before this fiscal year. The reason that they have an extra forty thousand dollars is because they got two federal grants during the year that they did not know that they would get for sure. And those grants were required to be spent during the fiscal year. Supplanting this, this forty thousand dollars in ARP. Hope House is requesting that the Grashit County Board of Commissioners will amend the contract with him, with them, in order to allow them to spend that forty thousand dollars in the next fiscal year. So that is the request that I'm bringing before the board.
Motion by Commissioner Bailey to approve that. Do we have a second?
I'll support it, but I, I've got some discussion, too.
All right, to get it on the table, a second by Commissioner Lumberman. And we have some discussion on it.
So, what, I guess I would wonder, Chris, is right now, the contract that we have with them is two hundred and fifteen thousand. So they are only going to spend a hundred and seventy-five thousand, because they got grants, and they got forty grand left over. Where do they get grants next year?
Well, we certainly hope that they do get grants next year for one.
Yeah.
Um, but they would be able to, there's daily operations that they'll be able to spend this forty thousand dollars on. If they're not eligible for grants.
In, in other words, uh, I almost, I, I mean, the, the, the way the ARP program is set up right now. If the entity that we give the ARP funds to does not meet the contractual standards, that, that portion of the money that they can't meet the contractual standards on comes back to us. And I, I almost wonder if we should do a reevaluation of the projects that weren't fully funded. Like, in other words, is it wrong for us as a board to just say, well, that forty thousand needs to go back to them? Or is it something where we should reevaluate and say, no, because there's, there were a lot of things that we turned down? And I, I guess I, I'm. So I may, I, I'll ask you, because you're the finance director. Am I thinking right? Am I, am I out of bounds?
That is exactly why this issue has come back to the board. It kind of falls into a gray area. We said that they could use the money for operations, but we gave them a time period to use it. So they did not use all of the money that was granted to them. So it would be up to the board to either extend that time period or to recall the fact.
I'd like to say something, and I think it's very honorable to let us know that they can spend that money to begin with. But I also think we should table this and so they can come to a meeting. So what the plans are, I think it's great that they were able to write a couple of grants and they bring more money in.
I have a couple of concerns. They had about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in there for salary, uh, last year. When you look at they, they, but they did their budget and they still had forty thousand left. So if you take the one seventy-five that they used of ours and, um, you let, you leave them the forty. So then they got about a hundred and thirty-five, they're gonna be short next year, even if they get the grants.
That is what he's going to be presenting to you about in the next meeting. They were, um, very successful in fundraising. And I do not remember the exact number, but I was very impressed with the amount of money that they had saved up in order to fund all of next year's, um, active operations. So that was the.
The other thing I think is, a little bit along John's lines there is that we, we've told these folks, we've, we've kind of told some different stories, I think, you know? We, we told the gentleman from Ashley, I looked him up to see what they wanted. They wanted like thirty-nine thousand dollars, I think, or something, or from Washington Township, I guess it was. And we had a little lady who wanted, I don't know, fifteen thousand dollars for Washington, uh, dishwasher thing or something, you know? And we said, well, we have any funds left over, you know, we'll take a look at that. We're probably five, six hundred thousand short on our funds. I mean, we wanted to save a million and a half when it got about six, seven hundred thousand. I think we left, was his name Howard, a couple of times he was here, I think we left him with the intention, if there's any funds left over, you're the guy. And, um, now I think we're there. I, I, I just think we're there, I, I don't know. Like you say, it's a gray area and I guess if I, if I was that gentleman, I'd think I probably would take care of what I asked you for. I, I think he was like forty thousand, when he was, I believe he was, I looked it up the other day, it seemed like thirty-eight, thirty-nine thousand. Whatever they do in the building or something. And I think the lady was maybe fourteen, fifteen thousand for a dishwasher.
I would still like to table it until they can come and maybe explain a little bit more, but that's fine, and then.
Other year, I'll be done. Their year ends what they say, thirty-four something.
I can reach out to him, let him know that, um, anything that he has left over after September thirtieth, he's gonna have to hold on to until he can come and speak with the board. I believe the next meeting is October fourth, so that's only, uh, two working days, so. Um, I, I would, I think.
Can he, can he take it as a bonus?
Well, that, th- those are some of the things that we like to avoid too. We don't want him to go out and dump the rest of the forty thousand dollars in the next two weeks in order to meet the, um, letter of the law in the contract, uh, you know, he's, he's so yeah, it, there's, there's risks involved too, you know?
I think it's good that he's been honest to come to you and tell you that.
I mean, he gets, he gets a report, he has to turn this in, but he's done with much.
Can't spend the money.
Can't just spend the money.
Well, it sounds like we want to have him here. Question, I guess, Chris, do you have a recommendation?
I've, I've stayed kind of out of the limelight.
Don't open that jar.
Morning.
Well, and I have a, I have a problem if we extend the date to them and, and, and it was just mentioned. There's nothing in the contract that precludes them from spending that, right, I was, it's right. So.
Once it's legally spent.
Yeah, I mean, they, we gave it to them to keep it open and that's what they've done and wouldn't been able to do, so we are in a quandary. Since if we say, don't spend the money, then we told them, but they got time to spend the money.
Right, right.
Well, but you look at that, you look at what they're doing, I mean, if they went, I don't know what they would buy, but if they give themselves a bonus, I guess. Do you have to approve what they're doing with it?
I see, your points are valid, I just want to see how we can do that and make it equitable.
I have a question too, would if we, um, since he's got forty thousand dollars left, or would have forty thousand dollars left, why don't we ask him if he would be willing to give up maybe that fifteen thousand from that, what was it, a washing machine or dishwasher or something? So we could put that money.
Yeah.
Another place.
We've got other people asking.
He would still have, he would still have some of that.
We've got a, a quandary.
Chris, how do you monitor your money? I mean.
I get, uh, quarterly financials from him.
They've done.
On, on what they've spent the money on. And it's, um, fairly categories, you know, salaries, uh, supplies, food, bedding, et cetera, so.
You know, as well as any entity, hate to give money back if you don't have. But I understand. I don't want to put them in a position where they feel they gotta have, you know, spend the money.
Oh, real easy, they could spend that money real quick on just food alone, feed the homeless, so.
Uh, through the contract, we gave them a year.
I guess I'm gonna call question on the motion on the floor. I mean, we should vote on this, right?
Yeah. What is the motion?
We allow them to have forty thousand dollars next year.
Carry it over next year.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Then allow them to spend it next year.
Carry it over for next year.
Okay.
Yeah, nice.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Bailey?
No.
Commissioner, or Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Lemberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes, motion passed. So we are on to.
You persuaded me, you persuaded, you persuaded.
You don't want to, dude.
Jeez.
Well, gave it on there.
Now he doesn't have to spend the money this year.
No, it's, it doesn't make any difference now.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, this is, oh my God.
All right, uh, who's handling item three here?
Item three, uh, the director of finance contract.
Tracy, are you handling this or?
Let me, let me give context, Chris. Uh, in years past, um, officials have become directly involved in working with Chris on his contract. It's not something that's come through me. I don't believe there's been that level of activity this year. I certainly think it's correct that one's administrator should, uh, speak for an employee, but, uh, so we've been kind of wondering how it should go this year. Chris is prepared to speak to this, I'm right here, I'm gonna agree with what he says and I will uh, add any comments. I don't want to take it away from him, but that's the context, so first we'll go ahead and get us started.
Thank you. My first contract with the county was entered into in the summer of two thousand and nineteen. Uh, at that same time, we were undergoing a, um, department head classification study, which was later adopted by the county in December of two thousand and nineteen. So it's just a little bit of a history of, of why I'm gonna come at this a little bit different than I had in the past. Um, my first contract was for eighty-five thousand dollar annual salary. Um, my current contract is for an eighty-five thousand dollar annual salary. I am in, going to be entering year three of a three-year contract. Um, what I'm asking of the board tonight is that one of, item nineteen of my contract allows for modification of the agreement between myself and the board. And if we enter into an agreement in writing, the contract can be amended. Uh, I would like my contract to be amended to a two-year contract from a three-year contract, which means my contract would expire on September thirtieth. And the reason for that is I would like my position to be placed on the department's, uh, this department supervisors wage scale.
Yeah.
Which has been adopted by the, um, currently I would fall on a scale at, at, uh, step six, which would put my salary this year at eighty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars. Applying the four percent raise for next year would bring the salary for the position at eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars.
Table I passed out to you earlier. And I believe I highlighted the theory he's talking about.
Oh, yeah, right, I know what you're saying, I know what's on.
This is what they have.
Yeah, he's asking me to share this up here real quick. So you're. Okay. The reason that I'm asking for the contract to be essentially ended at the end of this fiscal year is because the pay scale on my contract are from essentially to the same place. Which in my opinion, um, I don't need to be a contracted employee, I could be put on the pay scale. And that's one less thing that we need to worry about every year. But that is, that is my request to the board.
And, and Chris, this puts you on the top of the scale, there isn't anything after this, it'd just be.
I would be, I would be subject to union negotiations after that if the board goes to allow the department's, um, department head scale to adopt the union wages.
Chris, the problem I have is this, that puts you at eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars. And the problem is, we have this problem continuously over and over. We have the sheriff that works seven twenty-four. He's only making, like this, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. So actually, you work five days a week, probably forty, fifty hours a week. But the sheriff works, I'm sure, seven twenty-four, spelled out all day and night. Probably works just about every day. And so now we're, we seem to have all these studies, we continuously have a study and we get all these pay scales, but all we have to do is give one person raise like you, and that messes up the pay scale that we have to re have a study on again because our sheriff, people that are working, such as the jail or the sheriff's office, um, nine-one-one's another one, it's a seven twenty-four hour job. And so that's where I have a problem raising your wages or doing, changing this at this time.
Mr. Bunting, I would say that, uh, if we did not have salary studies done and we did not have salary schedules done, the issue that you are laying out would be precisely correct. However, by virtue of this board's decision to allow this study to have been done in two thousand and nineteen, we don't have that situation at all. And the way that these studies are done is that you evaluate what a financial administrator does. And then what a financial administrator does here and then, uh, in comparable counties. What a financial administrator makes here and what a financial administrator makes in comparable counties. Comparing one position to an entirely different position. I don't know, you're, you're, the elected, uh, work group, again, this board approved putting together a structure um, for evaluating elected officials' compensation. And the number that was arrived at for the sheriff, not here to talk about the sheriff, but the number that was arrived at for the sheriff was based on that study and comparable salaries in comparable communities. The, uh, our financial administrator has been here for a period of time that puts him at step six. Yes, the top of the scale. He has been working at wages below what he would have gotten had he been on, uh, this salary scale. And again, uh, work schedule. This man is here Saturdays, Sundays around budget time, he's here Saturdays and Sundays during audit time. So I, I, and the reason I don't like comparing is I am in no way disparaging the hours and the commitment of our sheriff. But if we're gonna do that, you've got to know how much, how often this man is here. And I think your financial chair, uh, can attest to that as well. So I appreciate the views you hold, I simply want to rebut with other information.
Okay, I have one more.
Am I missing a piece of paper?
No, I don't know.
I handed this out earlier.
I had it for you earlier.
I had it received earlier in reference service.
This was for, I thought this was the one you brought, oh, okay.
And I indicated when I passed it out to my folks that I would be bringing it up again.
So I don't, I don't. Tracy, when we hired you, it was to do the work that you do. And so what we're now paying you, we, we, no, let me tell you something, we've never had a finance person in the county or the people, the court, the commissioners are the ones who used to do the budget. And the administrator helped with that, with the county commissioners. But now we have actually, have a finance guy and you do a wonderful job, Chris. But we're paying double the money for something the commissioners are supposed to be doing.
I really, um.
And I've been here long enough to know what I'm saying and so does a lot of people that work here.
That's, that's terrific. Uh, I'm very confident in what I do and the value I add to this community and I think that I've, I've added it, uh, here tonight. This isn't about me. At any time, this board can, uh, get enough votes to terminate my contract and then you can ask this man or someone else to do two jobs. I came here, Jan, if we're gonna talk about me for a minute, no, I, excuse me, excuse me. Yeah. I came here and I created a professional administration, uh, department for the county. I understand that that's not something that you have valued, that's okay. Uh, I'm actually glad you're bringing this up with other people in the room and I hope people are, are, uh, on the, uh, are watching by YouTube and will, uh, uh, watch later. You did not have a financial administrator. None of your previous, uh, parks, uh, excuse me, uh, county administrators were financial administrators. No, no, they were.
Yes, they were, yes, they were, yes, they were.
No, they weren't.
Roger Cook was the first one. Now you're telling me that Roger Cook was not a financial person? He was the one that set this whole thing up, checked the balance. And from there on, we had administrators that were on this board or in this courthouse.
They financed people, they weren't financed people, Jan, to be honest.
That's another one.
I will add, I will add that when I came here, you were getting six or eight, uh, audit findings every single year. And finally, it was Commissioner Lambrecht that sat here and said, we've got to stop having the same, um, we've got to stop having the same audit findings year after year after year. Commissioner Bunting, may we talk about our highly talented, experienced, skilled.
Yeah, that's what we're talking.
Financial administrator, you're talking about me.
But you're talking about giving him a raise. I'm sure, um, that the sheriff over there would love to just have two or three months and he'd only have to work seven twenty-four and the rest of the time forty hours, fifty hours.
I would suggest if you would like to reconsider his sheriff's sal. I would suggest that if this board would like to reconsider the sheriff's salary, that you do it on the basis. I would suggest that if this board would like to reconsider the sheriff's salary, that you do it on the basis of the sheriff. Give him a hundred thousand dollars, give him two hundred thousand dollars, and he'd be worth every penny. But what I ask you to do is to evaluate one position at a time. I do not disagree with you about the value of our sheriff.
Earlier this evening about these wind turbines are gonna. Are eventually going to start coming back down. In fact, we already have some that we're not going to get the money that we used to get from them. So eventually fifteen years from now, we're going to be sitting. Um, who are we going to let go because we can't afford all of this wages?
Let me tell you why you know what's going to happen with the wind turbine money. It's because you have a very talented financial administrator and there's no previous administrator, perhaps since Roger Cook, that could have told you that. There's no previous administrator.
There is. Yes, there is.
Excuse me. There's no previous administrator that would have spent four hours in his first year in the job with you going over the budget. He did that. Tonight, he answered every single question you have. He's restructured this budget to save you money. Vote as you will, but if you will not honor this man's experience and his contributions to the county, I will speak up. I will take other questions.
Anybody have anything else?
I move that we uh make this change that Chris has asked for. I support.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Lumberman, second by Commissioners. To move Chris off the contract on. Six.
Chris, where are you at? Step five, you said? So you just found the right paper. You're at step five right now.
He's not being.
Eighty-six.
He's not being, yes.
Eighty-five? Okay.
No, his contract doesn't even pay him at uh step five. His current salary is eighty-five thousand dollars a year. That was year one. Year two. He didn't ask for an increase. He asked for two and a half percent on gross pay.
So I just give him the dog animal guy's salary, so.
All right. I even highlighted this line for you, so. Yeah, yeah.
It's late.
Okay. Go call vote again.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Oh.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you, Chris.
Pleasure.
Thank you.
Okay, next up. Um. Got the uh approval of IGA BLIGHT eradication. And we're talking Ashley and Perrington first?
Uh, yes, although kind of combined, but um uh this year Ashley and the villages of Ashley and Perrington would like to participate in our BLIGHT program. Um, I'm asking you to approve the intergovernmental agreements uh for both of these entities. Uh, the agreement has really not changed much. It describes the services that uh that we will provide and the way we provide them. Uh, in uh doing our BLIGHT eradication work. It's at a rate of one thousand dollars for uh two cases during the contract year. The change this year and the amendment uh that you'll uh be seeing in a moment with the Wheeler Township uh amended agreement simply allows for township supervisors or village. Administrators or village um officials uh to file the complaints. In year one, it was to be entirely citizen-driven. Uh, the township supervisors themselves asked that it be modified to this effect, but I've incorporated that. Into the Ashley and Perrington intergovernmental agreements. I'm asking your approval.
So move. Or.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bailey. Um, we need to separate it. Do we have a separate motion?
I think so.
We can, we can just add.
They're just the different names.
Yeah, so we can add uh Wheeler to this.
It's a little different.
We'll do it different. Okay, let's, let's work on this motion first then. Any discussion? And all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnay? Motion passed.
The situation with Wheeler is uh they are participating in this second year with us. I'm kind of catching up a little bit with the paperwork. Uh, the sole amendment is that again township supervisor be able to uh uh sign and file complaints with us.
Just amending that. So move.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, support by Commissioner Bailey. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnay? Motion passed. So now. Uh, any unfinished business, anyone?
We got one.
Oh, we have Spicer, that's right. I do, I added five. I moved that off to the side. So we've got the Spicer. Is that a bid on the AC unit?
No, what this is, and I very much appreciate your agreeing to add this as a late agenda item. I received this document just today. And this relates to the health department project, which has been going on forever. And we have an agreement from Spicer to do this work by October third, which would be before your next meeting. So what this is, you may recall. Um, that the board approved work on the health department. Uh, for up to five hundred thousand dollars to be paid from ARP funds. Uh, we retained Spicer Engineering to help us with the project design and with the bid package. Uh, we sent that out, um, and we received two bids. One for four hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars and the other for six hundred twenty-nine thousand or in excess. We just said, oh, no, we're not going to do that. And we uh suggested to this board that we just set that project aside. Uh, for a period of time until. The situation with contractors, suppliers and so forth calm down a little bit. Subsequently, Tony and Aaron Wosak, our contact with Spicer Engineering. Uh, continued to talk about this project and they thought, you know, there's a way that we could redesign this. We could take the um. The furnace units out of the ceiling where they had planned as a space-saving uh measure. And we're going to find two closet areas. Uh, this was a little tricky because you had to find space over there and they were occupying pretty much all of their space, but we. They worked with them over there. They found a couple of kind of larger closets that they could use for this. This should bring costs down pretty dramatically. So. We've asked Aaron to do some redesign on this. Um, and he is willing to do so and uh seems to be have the time and prepared to do it. But for this redesign, there um are some additional fees. This letter of agreement. Um, uh quotes us forty-six hundred dollars, four thousand six hundred dollars for. Uh, the redesign work and also helping us to put together the bid package. That's very valuable to us because these specifications are very, very technical. And Caitlin does a great job, but man, she needs support on this. Also, there is a not to exceed amount listed in the agreement of two thousand six hundred dollars. That is for uh construction oversight. We may not need any of that. We may not, we may need all of it. That is a not to exceed amount at an hourly rate. The hourly rate depends on who's assigned for a particular job. So the range for the hourly rate is between eighty-five dollars an hour and a hundred and sixty-seven dollars an hour. Depending upon whether uh Aaron puts a technician on the particular task, an electrical engineer, project manager, it just depends. So with this, we want to take another crack at this health department building. Uh, with a significantly uh simplified uh design and then we can just get this work done for these folks. So asking you to approve this um. This um uh additional services agreement um. As described.
As. As Tony was talking to Spicer about this remodel. Did they have approximate cost that they could bring this? Back into line?
Well, I hesitate to say first publicly when we want to get um uh bids, uh but also.
Percentage? Ten percent, five percent?
Maybe half. But. Don't hold them to that, please, because we know the environment we're in.
Me, there's got to be a rationale. This is what you want to save money on. How much money are you going to save? In other words, is it going to be ten thousand dollars?
Right. No, that's right. If it were ten thousand dollars, I wouldn't bring this to you. Yeah. So this, this really is kind of a return on investment kind of thing. So.
So I want to make sure.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, support by Commissioner Bailey. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnay? Motion passed.
Much appreciated.
So now. Now any unfinished business?
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
Well, we, we gotta go to the uh finance meeting. Uh.
See her.
How about a? Three to five minute bathroom break?
Okay.
Sound good? Yeah.
Chris.
George, did you have to fire her down or did you, did your sister fly down with your mom?
My sister?
You just put her on a plane and say, see you, mom?
No, with my mom, yeah. She accompanied my mother. Can't say anything about ever taking her back or anything.
My understanding, how do you trigger that?
This is already adopted and approved by the county.
Yeah.
But you want, you must bring what my position is based. And that's, this, this is adopted by the county.
But you're not on the scale.
I am. Director of Finance. So.
You were getting eighty-six.
No, I was getting, I was getting eighty-five. I was getting contracted.
So I mean, when you hired in your contract, right?
Hmm. When.
Are you, are you, are you unrelated?
This, this was created after I was put on contract.
So you were on contract and then this was.
The net pre-. Now I'm just asking to.
I'm going to ask you, was this done by a study?
There was.
That's what I mean. We get these studies done. And then we start, okay, we get a study done and you got five people, okay? So all five people, we get them all together, but then we find out here's somebody else over here. So you take this one, so you take this person over here. You put them with these five. Now all of a sudden, say, oh, you know what? He's um, he's on about three years, I think, ten years. I'm over here, um, five years I'm over here. Now I want to come up here too. And so we're back. It seems like the only job that we have as commissioners is.
Viro.
You know, raising. I mean, that's how we do every single month. And another one is, which hasn't even been here two years, a year, I think a year or a year, and she wants. Not how much it was.
So here, it's part of a study.
Not for somebody that's been here. Taking the spot by townships. That's just my, my. I gotta tell you. We went to hire somebody. We had five people apply for that job. They had an administrator. To be, yes, yeah.
I think, I wonder if we could just do attach.
All five personnel.
Cause regular meeting, I.
Yeah, it was going to work for sixty-six thousand dollars. It's fine with me. Here, I always believe that things happen for reasons and.
It's probably, that would be easier for you.
It's tough.
Yeah.
Doing, I don't want to, we used to do rate, we used to do all of this raise pay on all at one time. We do it every month, all year long.
This is Wheeler.
And that was another reason why I asked for all the department heads. I'd like to know what they're all making. It's probably the year that, how many years they've been here?
Miss Ashley.
Well, but they're.
And here is.
This is, oh, yeah, Chris. Oh, good. We're, so we're back to finance. We're going finance. Okay, thank you, Chris.
We just could attach, you know, just attach his.
People care of this, but I, I can buy it.
Whatever you say could work.
Buck said he would give me a ride home. Um, and it's raining like crazy all day.
They heard it several times. It looks really bad. Oh, look at my phone and see what it says. Oh, it's raining like crazy. Oh, wow.
It's only almost seven.
I see nothing on those words.
Since you're eleven-eight.
Hit the reset button.
I don't know how to do that.
No, but just.
Oh, here.
I can stretch my leg.
Now. At seven o'clock, it's going to be raining. Eight o'clock. Oh, it's sunny. It's light. We got to stay here till eight o'clock. It's going to stop raining then.
Jan, the bus is going to be leaving before then.
Well, hey, it's already seven. Yeah, seven.
Let's do this ice. Listen, I have a roll. Going to go in the finance meetings.
Yeah. Can we get started again?
Rain stops at seven. Can you redo it in seventeen minutes? The rain will pop and start again in ten minutes.
Well.
Ten minute.
We lose staff in the, at seven thirty, so.
A ten-minute increment in there that runs the car. By the way, could you?
All right, uh, we need a motion to uh go into the finance meeting. Motion by Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Bunting. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnay? So, John?
Uh, all right, let's go ahead and get started and let Chris. Take it away.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and. Bear my screen again. All right, you're going to go ahead with uh Finance Director's report. The drain prepayments has not uh moved since. My last report to you for the year, we prepaid two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in uh loans that we would have had to take out for. Uh, cleaning up drains and new construction for drains. The ARP funds and project list uh was included in your communications. Uh, for public record, we have now earmarked or spent one hundred percent of our grant. Of our seven point nine million dollars. Uh, two point five has actually gone out the door. Um. See, most recently. I don't remember what most recently went out. And remember what? I know I said one, the five hundred thousand to St. Louis for, okay. Um, that may have been the last project that has gone out the door. Um. City of, or the village of Perrington had their water tower, tower cleaned out and redone. Um, that was paid for a couple of weeks ago. Um, so they're making good progress too. Uh, so far, that's looking like that might be under budget, so that's something to keep your eyes on. So all good news, all good things in the community that are being uh performed. Our MERS OPEB. Um, our OPEB is down eleven point five percent on the calendar year. Uh, the SMP was down ten point seven percent. At the time that I created this report, so it flip-flopped a little bit. Um. Our OPEB account had been uh outperforming the SMP and possibly just for a few minutes here, the SMP uh flipped the other way. Any questions related to? Work?
Uh, I just have one question and the question would be about um drain prepayments. And. When uh, so like for instance, tomorrow we think moving several, we're just going to raise interest rates three quarters of a percent. Is there, it's something in place that if a uh prepayment is made, that. We would only want prepayments above a certain interest rate threshold. And I guess what I'm saying is. If our borrowing cost as a county right now is four. We shouldn't be prepaying something that's at three percent, right?
Well, I believe that this is an excellent question for um who will hopefully soon be our, our, our next investment advisor. I think this is something that they should be actively involved. I think this is something that they should be actively involved in also, because while they may have. Investment opportunities to bring us four or four and a half percent. Uh, they may advise us to do that instead of prepaying a note that might be three or three and a half.
Right.
And that is, um, yeah. You know, I, I, I'd be happy to research and learn that, but if, if we do have an investment advisor, I would. I would refer that we'd ask them what the best or better move would be.
Okay, yeah, well, we started doing this, we're already getting maybe a half a point or something, you know, and now, I don't know what the, I don't even know what CD rate is, but. Um, if it's two or three.
A one year treasury is four percent.
Yeah.
You can get four percent. One year.
Yeah. So now, now you, it's worth looking at whether you do it or hang on to the cash and make a little money before you pay them, you know?
We're also entering the low period where the ground freezes and we don't do, uh, much digging, you know, in, in the drains. Uh, while, while we're in a, a digging lull, we can get an investment advisor to date if, if we choose to go with this.
Did, did we hear that guy, or did we? Did we hear that guy?
Wow.
Yeah, we were talking about that.
Where, where did we leave it with that guy you presented?
Talked about it forever.
Information from us, um, some of Chris, some of.
We hired it, right?
No.
No, we didn't. Okay.
You guys are gonna talk about some things and come bring it back, right? Well, don't wait too long.
Okay.
We're losing money every day.
Speaking of money, cash balances for the county. We are looking at. A slight increase in our general fund from three point. Six to three point eight. Uh, historically, we usually see, um. General operating tax money come in a little bit quicker, um. I don't know if that is a concern that. Uh, municipalities are, are getting slower to getting it to us, or if taxpayers are getting slower to pay the taxes, but. We will continue to monitor that, um, a lot, a lot of general operating money can come in really quickly, uh, so we'll see how September balances look.
But when, but when times get like this and interest. You know, and, and inflation gets so much, people will start to hold money longer.
Right, as they can.
We've seen this cycle before, saw it six years ago. Same thing, money started coming in slower.
What is the deadline on that too?
Um, I believe it's September fifteenth is the deadline, I think it is, September fifteenth for the general operating tax bill.
Yes.
Yeah, without penalty.
So now. Can they get an extension? Or can they get an extension for like another month to get?
They pay those at the township, of an Emerson, we collect Emerson summer, but, um, no, there's a late fee after.
It's not terrible, it's not terrible.
So how do you determine the late fees? What they all?
Yeah.
That's why they, the land. Working on somebody else's one.
Well, I think, I think the late fee is a pretty good fee now, it used to be really minimal. But now it's a pretty good spot, if you don't pay them in time.
You look at your text and says, dude, this date, then this date.
Right, yeah. They turn them over to the county or whatever, and then you.
That doesn't happen until March first, or second, depending on.
So there's just. Right.
The titles for tree and all that, that's, that's a big jump, yeah.
Yeah, the old days, you used to be, uh, maybe a pointer, something just said.
That's what it's charging for percent.
Yeah.
During August, we distributed approximately five hundred thousand dollars in ARP funds, um. We're looking at delinquent tax fund with a small increase. Um, but in that, I, I don't see any further explanation needed for the cash balances, of course, if you have a question, please ask. Uh, I'll give you a moment to look over the. Check register for the month of August.
Chris, did you have anything that jumped out at you on the check registers?
I did not. If there weren't any other questions, um. Last item was a late add to the agenda, and I apologize for not having it on there, what it is, is. The final budget amendments for the fiscal year, we are required to, uh, by law. Uh, we cannot spend more than what the Board of Commissioners passes or allows us to. That goes by department and by fund. So administration is a department, so if administration spends more than what the budget was passed for. We need to come to you and ask for an amendment to increase that. Um, I tried to meet with you at six months, nine months, and then twelve to go over this in detail. Um, and, and I was out, I was out sick for a week, and, and I just did not have enough time to get this up in front of you on Thursday night. Um, but I, I, I completed this today. Um, I, I was worried. That we were gonna need to increase expenditures in the general fund due to costs going up. Due to healthcare going up, uh, and, and many other factors. Uh, but I'm happy to report. That for every department in the general fund that I'm requesting a decrease or an increase for. I was able to find a decrease in another department to help make up for it. So overall, the general fund expenditures has, is not going up. Um, this was a weird year. In a typical year, we have cost overages in courts. And we have cost. Underages. In the sheriff's department and the jail. And it flip flopped this year. But when we look at it, when I dug into it further, it made perfect sense. Um, we had some significant vacancies in the courts for a long period of time this year. Sometimes months and months, we had vacancies, uh, which. You, you know, the number one cost in the general fund is salaries and benefits. As I presented to you earlier, that's sixty percent of our fourteen million dollars goes to salaries and benefits. So when you have vacancies, you're gonna, you're gonna realize, um. Um, you're gonna come in under cost. Now, what we saw with the sheriff's office and with the jail in the overages that they had. Was that the vicious cycle of COVID continually coming back and affecting their employees. And right off the top of your head, you wouldn't think that that would cause for overages. But what that does is that leaves. Twenty of his thirty five employees available to work. When we would normally be rotating all of these bodies in and out throughout the different shifts, so now we have. Only two thirds of the available employees, which causes, uh, extreme overtime. Um, so. On top of that, it has been. An incredibly high rate of retirement for some of our. Um, people that work in the sheriff's office or in the jail, and. Those employees that work for that union do not have a cap on how much leave time. That they can accumulate, is that accurate?
That's accurate, well, there is, you can accumulate, um. Up to seven hundred and twenty hours of sick, you get paid all of that upon retirement, or any of you occurred in that year up to a certain amount. You get all your vacation, all your personal leave time and all your pound time paid out within one month, so. If you retire in good stead.
Everybody outside of the unions that work for the sheriff are capped at two hundred and forty hours. Um, it is not uncommon to see a twenty five year employee for the sheriff's office. To, um, have an additional twenty to twenty five to thirty thousand dollar payout when they sever from the county. Due to the leave time that they have, uh, accumulated, uh, and. Then, we had some, some good employees that retired this year, uh.
That didn't call in sick.
Yeah.
So, you know, they had their banks maxed out.
Mm-hmm. So, when you get three, four, or five of those, you're, you're adding another hundred to a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Uh, that we, we didn't a- account for when we went through the budget process. Um, so I'm gonna run through each of the general fund departments just to let you know, uh, what I'm asking you to approve for the MS. The Board of Commissioners, plus, please, I'm, I'm gonna kinda skim through these pretty quick, if something sticks out, stop. Uh, Board of Commissioners, uh, before I do this, I'm gonna skip to the second page, which will be on the back of what I handed you. This is how I did it, I ran a report that had every, uh, department. Looked at what the budget was, I looked at what they spent, then I dug into it and determined how much they would need to get through the end of the year. One of the tricky parts is. Sometimes we get bills in October and November that are applicable to September, so I, I need to forecast more than just the next fifteen days. So, so that's my methodology, and then I, page one is, is just the summary of what I'm asking for. Uh, Board of Commissioners, plus eight thousand dollars in legal fees, those legal fees are related to. Uh, the turbine lawsuit, uh, that's where we park those, majority of those get reimbursed, but. Um, I still underestimated the expenditures. Uh, Judge of probate, plus seventeen thousand dollars legal fees, uh, probate. Hires lawyers to represent children, um, the cases. Were much, uh, much higher quantity than they had been in the past. Uh, administration, thirty thousand dollars, twenty two of that is related to healthcare costs, we had. Two employees that used to opt out, that opted into healthcare. This year because it was offered to them without a copay. Or, that's not the right word.
We didn't have to, but they didn't, didn't, yeah, they didn't, they didn't have to pay a portion of it.
Premium, thank you very much. MSU extension, plus five thousand dollars for building repairs.
What was the building repairs?
Do you know where they're currently located?
Yeah.
Uh, that building is falling apart, and they just did. Repairs in order to keep that building together, the Secretary of State Building in the city of Elma.
You know, they rent it.
We rent that from the city of Elma, um.
It's almost like a triple man, like if he's in that hill.
And, uh, Bill struck a deal with the city, if we repair this portion of it, will you please repair this portion of it, and so. They combined forces to make it a, a more livable space. Buildings and grounds plus twenty thousand dollars related to increased healthcare costs and, um, gas, gas was surprising. Surprisingly killer in buildings and grounds, drains. Plus two twelve for the prepaid drain loans. Um. We prepaid two hundred and thirty two thousand dollars, so overall, drains did a really good job with their budget, we just added two hundred and thirty two thousand dollars to it. Um, and I didn't want to amend the budget for that earlier, cause I was hoping I could just lower it somewhere else, and I was able to do that. Uh, Sheriff's Department, plus eighty five thousand dollars, um, fifty of that was related to healthcare costs. Um, we've talked about that, with the turnover, um, we, we're seeing more family and married, um, officers. Jail plus one hundred thousand dollars, there's was. Over several different things, overtime, healthcare, wages. Animal control related to healthcare and overtime. Medical examiner, plus fifteen thousand dollars, uh, the number of autopsies in this current fiscal year. Was literally double of what it was in the prior fiscal year.
You know, do you, just out of curiosity, how many autopsies?
I did not look at the, I did not look at the number of autopsies, I'm sorry.
And Sheriff, did you tell me that if, if, if somebody in this county dies, or a witness. Like all alone in a house.
The one that does our autopsy unless the physician. Uh, the MEI goes out and gives the Dr. Hunter, Dr. Prisinski a reason not to. Uh, autopsy based on, you know, if they're ninety five years old and had congestive heart failure and they're from. And their bed was unwitnessed, then they probably don't want an autopsy, but the forty year old male is. Is brought over dead, yes, they're gonna do an autopsy.
Yeah, have, do you have an idea on numbers?
Let's say, Tony, why, because this includes Alma, Saint Louis, anything Michigan State Police Breckenridge, and we would handle maybe. Twenty five thirty to here.
I'm con, I'm emailing our ME right now to get those numbers for you.
When we first started, I think it was around ten, ten fifteen, I think when we did it, you know, and so.
Then it's doubled, that's about right, twenty five to thirty.
Probably had COVID there.
Any, any guess on the increase, why?
Um, a lot more people are dying at home rather than hospitals.
Oh.
I think Sam can probably tell you that too.
Afraid to go to hospital. Well, that and, a lot of people are not attending, I mean, it was just a lot of people that, I had two last week at nursing homes. Family said goodbye to them, walked away and said, somebody else take care of.
Hmm.
Uh. It's set on the county show.
Last week, one, both on the same day, one was in Ashley and one was in Fulton Center.
Yeah, not unusual. Understanding.
Let somebody else do it.
What do you mean, this family, and you mean they don't want?
Remember, can we figure that, like, do we know? And you call them, they don't call you?
You don't be doing that.
Oh, that's sad.
Go to the ME's office.
I can do it, I can tell you.
I can tell you how. I had two on the same day, Wednesday.
So how do you vary them, do you cremate them or?
Many, ME takes care of them, they sit there about ninety days, and then I'll cremate them, or somebody will cremate them, give me.
I guess that question.
For my curiosity, wow.
God, I guess that.
I know, I know.
All right, so, continue. Here we have the departments within the general fund that were able to decrease authorization that, uh, the board has passed. Uh, District. Forty thousand dollars vacancies, June, uh, fifty thousand dollars. Uh, contracts of vacancies. Twenty thousand dollars through vacancies, they, as you can see, of course. They struggle to fill some positions. This past, past year. Um, besides fifty thousand dollars in the contingencies, so I grabbed the fifty, um, contingency. Appropriations, the twenty six thousand dollars for the year. Um, and then appropriations to other funds, we were able to recoup three hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars, this includes capital projects. Uh, that we've, were going to fund, but. We were unable to complete due to supply chain, secondary road patrol. Uh, the state of Michigan gave us some extra money, uh, this year that we were not expecting. Um, so we didn't have to transfer as much to secondary road patrol, and then, uh, the childcare fund also in under budget. Now, unfortunately, the general fund is not the only thing that we have to go over, we have to go over all the other special revenue funds. We hold, um, the books for the road commission. Uh, not in detail, but we are legally required to accurately reflect. Expenditures and revenues, uh, they brought in an extra million dollars than what they, uh, were expecting in road grants. And so they're asking for a million in expenses and revenues, when we look at these special revenue funds, we want them to be self-contained. Uh, we don't want to send them money from the general, we want them to generate enough money or have enough money in the bank for their expenditures. We s, we, this, we were successful with that this year. So as we go through this, there's gonna be no negative effect on our general fund. The Sheriff Milage, this is over, um, this is gonna go over budget, but we are going to be able to move those funds, uh, move those expenditures. And have that covered in a different, in different funds, so we don't need an amendment there. Brownfield, we need to increase fifteen hundred and fourteen dollars, both expenditures and revenues, we just collected more than what we budgeted. Uh, Blight, we're gonna spend about five hundred dollars more than what, um, I had budgeted for, and we'll use five hundred dollars from fund balance to do that. Recovery Court Fund, plus five thousand revenue and expend. Veterans Memorial Maintenance Fund, um. That should say eleven hundred and twenty six expenditure. That should come from the fund balance, and I, I wrote revenue there, I apologize for that. Can you make a note of that, Angie, please, for, uh, uh, amending this request? The delinquent tax fund, we need to increase seventeen thousand dollars in expenditures, and that will be used by fund balance, uh, those are from. That was caused by two things that came. Uh, those are from, that was caused by two things that came to the board and the board approved. One was the Yon-Yo contract for um balancing and um training salaries.
Working in Treasurers Office, didn't you?
What's that? Soil erosion, we added an additional officer, um an additional person over there, uh gained the license needed, so she has been going along and charging a portion of her salary there, so asking for an increase in four thousand dollars to come from fund balance, of which they have about a hundred thousand. Fringe Benefit Fund, increased two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, both expenditure and revenue related to healthcare. Now, the way that the French Benefit Fund works is that all of our benefits are paid out of there, so one hundred percent, everybody's healthcare is paid out of the French Benefit Fund. We cut the check to Blue Cross Blue Shield. And then we go and we charge back to every department in the county for those specific um employees. So anybody in the Treasurers Office that has healthcare, the friend, they send the French Benefit fund money to help pay Blue Cross Blue Shield. So the revenues coming into there are coming from all the other departments, and it's in the budget amendments in the general fund would represent if there's increases in healthcare. Current Tax Collection Fund, District Court Custody Fund, Circuit Court Custody Fund, Inmate Custody Trust Fund, Probate Court Custody Fund, all of those were created this fiscal year and thus were not budgeted for in the prior year. So these are all the fees and taxes that we collect here, where a portion of them are required to go somewhere else, typically the state of Michigan. So if you pay a speeding ticket, there is a portion, a percentage of that by law that is recouped by the state of Michigan. We collect that, now it goes in this fund, and then the treasurer sends that to the appropriate place. So these are my estimates on the activity for the year for those. This is this is new for me. It'll all wash out. It doesn't cost the county anything. Every dollar we put in there is a dollar that goes somewhere else. The last one is the Michigan Justice Training, are requesting an increase of two thousand expenditure, two thousand revenue. Our request to the board is to um approve these budget amendments as presented. Is the one amendment that the clerk will be able to to read to you. And I am open for any questions. I guess I apologize for not getting this.
So do you have a figure on how that negatively affects the previous budget or but our current budget, or it doesn't?
It does not.
Okay. All you're doing is moving things.
It's just, it's a wash.
Okay, that's what all I wanna know.
Yep.
I make a motion that we, do we have to go back to regular session to make the motion?
Yeah.
Oh, I just forgot about that.
Yeah.
I'll just.
Yeah. And if there is no questions, that does conclude my presentations for the evening.
Okay, then we have the Treasurer Report, right?
Oh, yeah. Good job, Chris.
He's got a report, right?
Along with my usual reports, I have submitted my annual Treasurer's Report. This report was not submitted last year due to the Treasury. Um, it took them a while to get to revise this form, so last year it was not required. Um, some of you are used to seeing the old reports. This is, this is totally different. Um before they were um two thousand and three and forward with all of the tax years, um and the information for that, this is just focused on one year. It needs to be turned in the second calendar year after the sale, so this is for twenty twenty. And and the information is right on the bottom as far as um oh, number of parcels ordered foreclosed, and then it goes on with many different columns, and and then there's the what the, what was gained after paying out surplus. Well, in twenty twenty, there was no surplus. Five for it, so that number is zero. But that's what this new report is gearing for, that information.
I did have a question. I bet I was looking for it. Um, how many? You had the auction in August. How many did you have? How many things did you have to sell?
Thirteen.
Thirteen?
And twelve sold. I still have one down in Pompeii that did not sell, and that will go back on October twenty-eighth. That that goes back to the auction.
Is it a home or a land?
It's a home.
Was that Pompeii?
I can imagine what it looks like.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I went with the only one that didn't go, so. But so twelve of them went back on the tax rolls, so.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
Much fun. Did you bring it all together? I didn't see that.
Well, I I got, we've gone with title check. We contracted with title check. That's why it was an online auction. It got a lot more exposure than what we have ever had in the past. Um, I recently got that check, so I need to get the taxes paid and, you know, all the base tax stuff taken care of, and then I will have a number for you. Does anybody have any questions on anything?
We have uh investment.
No. Okay, I'm still working on that with my, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We have on this agenda, we eat other financial business, and it's the amendments, but we're gonna go back and do you have to do that?
Yeah.
Hey, John, I have one question on page ten. Um, for checks that were written, there was one here for Kent, we were office furniture. Where did that go? For four thousand three hundred and forty dollars.
Well, even I went into District Court, they just outfitted following new meeting rooms. And I believe I, the District Court Administrator employee or and officer who I, the best he was for the furniture that he would like to outfit that.
Oh, okay, I was just curious.
Okay, so it was I I guess, uh Matt, uh do I have anybody on for public comment? Do we?
We, we do have a Bonnie Gustavason that's joined. She did make a couple of comments via the chat window, but I believe those were in the um their general meetings, so I can wait to read those during the general meeting, or she could unmute and make those if she chooses to.
Bonnie, why don't we move back to the regular meeting, and we'll finish up business, and then we'll let you talk? So without objection, we'll go back to the regular meeting.
Okay, without objection, we're back in the regular meeting. And we have those uh budget amendments we need to motion on.
I move that we accept those budget amendments as presented.
With the exception.
With the exception of.
Fund two ninety-six Veterans Memorial Maintenance, plus one thousand one hundred and twenty-six from fund balance and net revenue.
You took the words right out of my mouth.
So we got a motion by uh Lemberman, support by uh Smith to uh do what you just said. But any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
I oppose, nay. Motion passed. And we need also need a motion to accept the financial report.
Come on.
Motion by Commissioner Bailey, second. Second by Commissioner Lemberman. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
I oppose, nay. That motion passed. So I believe we're just down to the final public comment. Ani, did you have anything? You can unmute yourself.
Yeah, Bonnie did let me know that she can only chat. She doesn't have the ability to chat.
Okay.
She would like, I can read her comments.
Why don't you go ahead with that, then?
It it's a little hard to tell what she was referencing or at which point in the meeting, but uh she did say, in the business world, budgeted money not spent, you lose it. Uh, those funds go back to the pool to be reallocated. And then she also said, why is she negotiating wages? So those were the two comments that came up.
Something about negotiation of wages.
Would you repeat the chat about the negotiation of wages?
Yeah, she just made the comment, why is she negotiating wages? And like I said, it's hard to tell which, at which point in the meeting she's referring.
Okay, all right. Okay, uh any further business? Then without objection, we're adjourned.